Good evening and welcome to the June 23 special meeting of the Alhambra City Council. Roll call, please.
Mazza. Maloney.
Here.
Wang.
Here.
Andrade Sadler.
Here.
Lee.
Here. The only item on the agenda is closed session. Do we have any speakers from the public for this item?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards, nor are there any attendees on Zoom at this time.
We will now move into closed session. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, this evening, we would request a recess in a closed session to discuss one potential initiation of litigation item, and then to get some direction on some labor negotiation items.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. We have reconvened from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
There's no announcement from closed session this evening.
Thank you. We have now completed the item on this evening's special meeting agenda, and I will adjourn the special meeting and move into this evening's regular meeting. Good evening and welcome to the June 23 regular meeting of the Alhambra City Council and joint special meeting of the Alhambra Public Financing Authority, Alhambra Capital Improvements Corporation, Alhambra Parking Authority, Gold Course Clubhouse Corporation, and Alhambra Facilities Financing Authority. Roll call, please.
Mazza.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Wang.
Here.
Andrade Sadler.
Here.
Lee.
Here. Please join me in the flag salute. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, through God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mission statement: The city of Alhambra is dedicated to responsive, creative leadership and quality services, ensuring desirable neighborhoods and a supportive business environment, while being sensitive to the diversity of our community. Our first item is a ceremonial presentation of commendations to the recent winners of the Fourth Annual Environmental Scholarship Award. We have certificates for you. And we have the... We have certificates for these winners and also checks for them. It's always good news. Are there... So are you the representatives for the four? Okay, I'll just announce their names. Danny Thatch, Elizabeth Ma, Asher Wong, and Michelle Zhang. Is there a representative for them? Are you Asher? Danny, okay. Congratulations, Asher Wong. Congratulations. Elizabeth Ma, congratulations. And last but not least, Michelle Zhang, congratulations. Let's give him a round of applause.
Madam Mayor, there is a raised hand on Zoom right now. We could check in maybe with Randy K. to see if they wanted to speak on this item, or it's for perhaps the next item.
Is it for this item? For the...
Can we have Randy K. unmuted, please? Ms. K., you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Oh, it's for items not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and proceed. Next, we have public comment for non-agendaized items. During this portion of the item, individual speakers will have five minutes each to make their comments, and the total time for the item will be 30 minutes. If there are any remaining speakers at the end of 30 minutes, those speakers will be able to make their comments at the end of the meeting. Also, we ask that any speakers please state their name and address for the record before making their comments. Do we have any speaker cards from the public?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do. We have several speaker cards.
The first speaker is Daniel, Mr. Daniel Chan. Please come up.
Shall I start?
Yes.
Yeah. Honorable, honorable City Mayor and council member of great city of Alhambra, I'm so glad. My name is Daniel Chan, former pastor of Mandarin Baptist Church of Los Angeles, right across the street, and current president of HOAID of Main Street Collections. First of all, I thank you for all the good job you've done to this city. And actually, our church has a great relationship with this council. I once conducted senior choir seven years ago, along with Pastor Alan Chan and Samuel Chung, and one of our senior choir members said, "Make sure you vote for our members." So I vote, I vote, and I make sure other senior votes, and later we found out it's a good result, and thank you very much. I really wish and pray for the city have peace and friendly neighborhood. But recently, in the place I live, since 2013, the Main Street Collections, two years ago, the choir environment was broken by the business of F-45. There's a fitness center. I love fitness. I like people working out, be healthy. But the problem is, they have a six o'clock class with double bass music, with loud music, with a whole bunch of people doing the exercise while they're exercising, losing weight. Our residents, 1Y Louis Family with the baby, the baby is crying every morning in the six o'clock. And also, 1F Resident Jennifer King, they are greatly disturbed. We have another resident regularly to be disturbed. The only thing he's better is, six months he lives here, six months he lives in Taiwan. So at least he can escape for three, six months. But as the president of the HOA, I don't think this noise issues is good for the residents. We try to contact the code law enforcement, we try everything. I write a complaint letter, but it's not much. Actually, I even contacted the owner of the fitness centers. As a pastor heart, I want them to have a good business and healthy lifestyle, but could it be doing in a considerable way that's not affecting the residents? I suggest them to cancel the 6:00 AM class because the construction noise allowed is seven to nine. And also, another way they can be more considerable is they don't drop the weight. If they exercise, they drop, boom, boom. It will be regularly affect our residents. But unfortunately, we didn't receive any positive response. And another way, I sent an email to the owner. I say, "Recently, I saw lots of empty businesses placed in Alhambra. We want to have good business, but can you move to somewhere that we don't have second-floor residents over there, so you can joyfully help people to have a healthy lifestyle, at the same time our residents can enjoy the moment of peace and good residence here?" I believe our council can do something about it. That's lots of possibilities I really want to address. I want to make the last remark. Thirteen years ago, 2013, when I first moved into this residence, we have a similar noise and vibration issue in the 408 building, and we don't know what to do. So I humbly wrote a letter to the city council that time. But a good thing is, that time, we have Mayor Stephen Shane wrote a letter to the business right away, said, "Please correct your problem." And then their business owner contacted us, the HOA, and eventually, we work out, they move away. So I believe the current city council can also do the wonderful jobs. So I believe something good will happen, this city will be greater and better. So hopefully, this issue can be addressed. Thank you very much. God bless.
Our next speaker is Ms. Jennifer King.
All right. Hello, Alhambra City Council. My name's Jennifer King. I live at 428 West Main Street, Unit 1F. I have been a resident here in Alhambra for over 12 years, and the first 10 were great, until F-45 showed up. Since then, oh my gosh, I have been expressing my issues regarding the loud noises, vibrations, and constant disturbances, and sending emails and phone calls between Officer Perez Garcia and Andrew Ho with no resolution. Me and other residents of 428 have also made countless phone calls to the police to report the noise disturbances, and yet, nothing has happened to help the situation. Our HOA hired a sound engineer to measure the decibels and vibrations that show that the gym has constantly gone over the code limits. These findings were reported to Officer Perez Garcia, and all he did was tell the gym owner to be quiet with no disciplinary action. Nothing such as a fine, citation, or request to upgrade their soundproofing, and this is unacceptable. Since the gym has been notified of their excessive noise, they have tried to turn their music down, but it can still be heard, and the noises generated from the people that attend the classes are still very audible, such as cheering, yelling, weights dropping, and vibrating into our homes. These noises are so loud that they can reach the third-floor residents and constantly wake up my next-door neighbor's baby from his sleep. I get no relief from this noise. It wakes me up at 6:00 AM every day, and when I get home from work, the noise starts again, until the classes are over. When any of us get home from a long day at work, we're looking forward to our sanctuary that is our home. A place that's quiet, a place that helps us decompress and relax from the day. You wouldn't want this for your home either. So I'm here to ask for the city council for their support and help to resolve this issue. There are so many other empty spaces on Main Street, excuse me, on Main Street, that do not have any residents above or next to them. For the very best of everyone, F-45 should be moved to another space, or at the very least, be subjected to comply with proper soundproofing and stricter sound and vibration codes, because the decibel limits allowed are more than what is acceptable in a private home. Please help us. F-45's presence is affecting an entire community of people in this building.
Our next speaker is Bondi Pam.
Wow. Streets emptier, ghost towns, funding cuts, California prices out of control, insurance for homes, insurance for business. That's a great start for your future, right? Apparently, it seems that way. We heard one account of it. You have a disturbance of the peace, and no solution. Amazing. And we have law enforcement. The gentlemen behind me and the women behind me, great law enforcement, but where's the accountability to enforce the law? The same goddamn law that Donald Trump has enforced against illegal immigration. Now, in Pasadena, Victor M. Gordo, fat boy there, doesn't give a rat's ass about immigrants. Don't care about Mexicans, don't care about Asians, don't care about blacks, don't care about any population but them, like you, who make an income and have an income and watch others suffer in the great state of California. And that's because some of you here, some of you there, like to panderize with these monopoly of people up here that destroy our country, destroy our state. You know what I feel about California? I won't say it. But it's time that California changes and reforms its deliberate actions to harm police, to be defiant against what is legal and illegal in my country, a natural-born citizen. Not an illegal immigrant, not an idiot destroying properties and the value of our properties that provide us jobs, provide us security, and provide us hope, Mazza, hope. But let me give you good examples of fraud, waste, and abuse that soon Donald Trump will address in California. L.A. USD $18.8 billion deficit. Wow, that's amazing. And what about the city of Los Angeles? They're in the billions of dollars in a deficit, and they asked Newscom to give them another billion to balance out their upside-down crisis, which has fucked up Los Angeles, fucked up California, and fucked up all of us who live here. We're tired of it. So I'm saying it to your face, council people, council men, council women, get some balls and speak up against the illegal shit going on in this state and correct it. Fuck Judy, the senator or whatever representative person she is. Is it Judy Cho from Monterey Park? Fuck her. She's stupid ass. And the people who follow and represent that type of bullshit, lying to the American people, how well we're doing when we know goddamn well we're not doing well, after I just got through telling you, education is in a deficit of $18.8 billion? What the fuck is going on in California? The second-largest school district, and I'm pointing this out so people here in Alhambra, people in Pasadena, people in Los Angeles can hear the goddamn logic behind this, or the reasoning. I am a person of faith, person of God-fearing, but I am looking forward to the day that God's vengeance, like it's soon to come. Have we not heard that Donald Trump finally did something right? He got us going in those last days. The end of times. The yaoi god that I, a Native American, believe in that's coming to destroy the world of mankind that's evil. So medical funds undocumented of $12 billion state dollars going to whom? Not fucking me. Not when I was fucking homeless. Not when I was pandering the fucking Sacramento state for capital for money and funding for EBT shit and all this fucking nonsense of insurance. So I know what I'm talking about. So beware. Donald Trump is coming to San Gabriel Valley to make a change. Grant my words, he's doing it in Los Angeles, and you see the fucking fear. Don't have fear, do what's right. Thank you and good night.
Our next speaker is Mr. Eric Sinata.
Madam Mayor, Council, hi. I'm actually here for my parents and in solidarity with my fellow tenants at 428 West Main Street. This past December, I moved my elderly parents to a unit at the condos above the F-45 gym, and this was just back in December. And, you know, we heard the vibration, and this is an upper-floor unit, and as well as in the garage, you could hear some significant vibration and booming. And I was aghast to learn, once I got to know the neighbors, that they've been living with this for two years. And I have to tell you, it is madness, the noise, right? Especially at 6:00 AM. And it's all-consuming. As you probably know, when things like this happen in your life, it's like, it's all you can think about, it's all you can focus on, and it just consumes you. And to have to put up with this for two years, I feel so bad for my neighbors, my parents who's been through December, but still. You know, it's clearly that the tests were done, and it's clearly violating the noise and vibration ordinance. And so, not sure why it can't be addressed and enforced. But again, as Pastor Dan mentioned, you know, no ill will to people, but that if anything, the owner of F-45 and the property owner of the unit he's renting from, the burden should be on them really to work it out, who's at fault, rather than us having to do this. And I'm hoping that's the case, and that we could move it, have F-45 cease to cause this disturbance and have them work it out. And I think it's also important that, you know, if we, going forward, if you have mixed-use units, that proper infrastructure is there. You know, I think it's a lesson learned in terms of, if you are going to have a gym, not all gyms are the same. You have to have the infrastructure for noise dampening, vibration dampening. So, you know, maybe it's a conditional use permit update as well. But yeah, please, if you could do something, it's just, it's just all-consuming. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Lola Armandares.
Lola Armandares, excuse me. I'd like to launch into this right away. However, I'm not accustomed to the language that the gentleman used, and I use the word gentleman loosely. Perhaps he'll find a better way to express himself than to use the language he did. The first item I'd like to bring up is, I've subscribed to the Pasadena Star News, and there was a notice of Alhambra Director of Community Development Public Hearing. This is the first time I've seen a notice of this sort. It says, "Notice is hereby given that the Director of Community Development will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 30, at 1:00 PM, or as soon thereafter, as the matters may be heard, in Conference Room A of the Alhambra City Hall, 111 South So-and-so. The Director will hold a public hearing on the following items. Number one, address 433 and 503, South Palm Avenue. Applicant is Wayne Chin. It's a request for an application for a lot merger to combine two existing parcels into one parcel of approximately 20,000 square feet for the purposes of converting the existing industrial warehouse buildings into office, display room, and enclosed parking uses under a single ownership. The second address on the agenda is 2001 and 2013 West Valley. The applicant is David Win, and it's application for a tentative parcel map to lift a recorded lot combination covenant which merged three parcels. The reason I'm bringing it up is this is the first time in all my years that I've attended meetings here to find out that we're having a meeting at 1:00 in the afternoon in the conference room to discuss Palm and combining into 20,000 square feet. This is something I have not seen at all. And I have questions because we're talking about South Palm Avenue, and Palm Avenue is going to be very congested, as you very well know, because we have the three restaurants coming in across the street from the Target. And then, this is going to be going in just down the street, and Palm Avenue is going to have the bicycle lanes. So anyone who shops at Target, you know you're sitting there either on Main Street or on Palm, just waiting to gain access to the streets, it's so busy. So I'm questioning why we're doing this at 1:00 in the afternoon and in the conference room, because if you have two items on the agenda... This is Conference Room A. Is that the room behind chambers? It is? And you have two items on the agenda? And you're going to have to have staff there and the people involved and public if they want to attend also? How are you going to get that many people in that room? So I would like to have you look into it or give me an answer. I would appreciate it. I'd like to attend, but whether I'll be able to get in there or not, I don't know. And why at this time of day and the location? The other item I have, I'll go very quickly. Fireworks. I certainly would like to have a ban on all fireworks, legal or illegal, and illegal. In light of all the destruction that has gone on in the last several months, people losing their homes, their lives, their positions, and so on, we're going to be out shooting off fireworks at a cost of, if I recall correctly, because you entered into a three-year contract at $40,000 a year for fireworks. So we've got $40,000 for fireworks. We have that kind of money for something that really needs to be taken care of in I also, in line with the fireworks, I'm going to request police presence at the Edison easement. That's Alhambra Road, Raymond, and Cedar, oh, all the way down to Cedar, correct? Because people do discharge fireworks there. The easement is right up against the backyards of the people on Ethel. And I've seen children holding the fireworks, adults giving the children fireworks. I usually, in the past, I would go out on the 5th of July in the morning to see how much trash was left over, what's the condition of the easement. And the one day I did go, I found, and the reason I mention is because people discharging fireworks there, the high-voltage lines, the fireworks can possibly hit those lines and be deflected into the backyards, to roofs, to homes, people who are celebrating in their property. What I came across that one morning was a pigeon, a homing pigeon with a little band on his leg. His chest was seared open. He took the hit. If he hadn't been there, that fireworks would have hit those wires and gone, who knows, into whose property and damaged him or injured somebody. I provided photographs of the bird to City Clerk's office many years ago, so this goes back quite a ways. So I would like to have some police presence there. And I think that...
The next speaker is Antonio Solano.
Honorable Mayor Lee and City Council members, my name is Antonio, and I am here on behalf of Community Health Alliance, or CHA for short. Our coalition focuses on informing and educating the community about the dangers of second and smoke, which I'm here to talk about this evening. Second and smoke includes smoke that travels from the burning ends of tobacco products such as cigarettes and other plant-based products such as marijuana and cannabis. This also includes aerosols exhaled by users, electronic smoking devices such as e-cigarettes or vapes. Now, second and smoke causes adverse health effects for both adults and children. These include stroke, lung cancer, son and infant death syndrome, and respiratory illness, among others. According to the 2025 State of Tobacco Control Report, published annually by the According to the 2025 State of Tobacco Control Report, published annually by the American Lung Association, the City of Alhambra received a C grade for its current smoke-free multi-unit housing protections. Through the recent collected public opinion surveys that we collected, we found that among those living in multi-unit housing, 1 in 3 Alhambra residents report being exposed to second-hand smoke in their homes in the past year. Additionally, 84% of surveyed residents who live with someone with a medical condition believe that their condition is worsened by second-hand smoke exposure. Similarly, 91% of residents surveyed said they would prefer to live in a completely smoke-free multi-unit housing. And 88% of that respondents agree, or strongly agree, that all units in multi-unit housing should be smoke-free and vape-free. Now, the City of Alhambra has previously established protections regarding tobacco product sales and smoking in outdoor areas. As Goal 6 of Alhambra's strategic plan looks at improving housing opportunities, we believe our coalition aligns with the city's goals, in terms of creating safe and affordable homes. Our coalition continues to provide education on second-hand smoke exposure in residential settings. According to the city data, approximately 45% of Alhambra residents live in multi-unit housing where shared ventilation systems may increase exposure risk. Even if a household establishes a non-smoking policy within their unit, second-hand smoke may still travel through shared spaces or ventilation. In 2014, the U.S. Surgeon General concluded that there is no risk-free level exposure to second-hand smoke. Public health data shows that preventative community measures can help reduce overall tobacco use and protect vulnerable populations such as youth and elderly. We welcome the opportunity to connect with you, to share more about the concerns we've heard from Alhambra residents regarding second-hand smoke exposure in multi-unit housing. Our coalition remains committed to informing and supporting the community, and we would appreciate the chance to provide additional context about the experiences residents may have shared with us. We will, we will be following up with an email to each of your offices to see if a brief meeting can be arranged at the time that works for you. Thank you for your time and for your continued efforts in supporting our community's health. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jay Shou-Yang.
Hi, my name is Jay Shou. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm here to speak on two items that directly affect the health and well-being of Alhambra residents. The need for a citywide smoke-free housing policy and the concerns around the Fremont Ramp Interchange Project. Let me just start with the smoke-free housing policy. I want to thank the City Council for taking the important steps back in 2021. I know, Adele and Johnny Stadler, you were spearheading this effort. To reduce the second-hand smoke exposure outdoors and to strengthen tobacco retail licensing, and those efforts really mattered in this region, especially where high school students have been exposed to vapes and a lot of these new electronic cigarette items in the region. But now it's time to go further, which is going to places where people spend most of their lives, which is their homes. Nearly 60% of residents are renters, and 45% live in multi-unit housing. But even those who live in shared housing is vulnerable. I live in a house with six roommates, and there have been several times when cigarette smoke seeped into our shared areas, and I had to ask folks not to smoke near windows or inside, and that's never an easy conversation. For many residents, especially low-income or immigrant families, advocating for clean indoor air can be intimidating and unsafe. And that's why a citywide smoke-free housing policy is so important. It gives renters protection, it removes ambiguity, and it sends a clear message that clean air is a right, not just a privilege. This policy would align with Alhambra's broader goals of public health and sustainability, and if we're serious about creating a livable, climate-resilient city, we have to create and make sure that there are indoor environments that are safe, too. Now, I want to shift to item 15, hoping to just speak on the public comment for this, regarding the amendment to the Cooperative Agreement with Caltrans for the Fremont Ramp Interchange Project. Frankly, as you know, I've been advocating on this item for quite some time, a little disappointed. In 2023, residents were told that there were more opportunities for meetings on this project. Still hasn't happened. Even when I checked the Advancing Alhambra website, the last meeting was in April of 2023, and now the city is proposing an additional $70,000, bringing the total to $280,000 to move this freeway ramp project forward without ever coming back to the community in this last year to explain what's going on. And I want to be clear, 95% of the residents in my district, and I've door-knocked for quite some time during 2024, and even in Councilmember Adele and Johnny Stadler's district, they don't even know this project exists. And when they do learn about it, almost no one supports it. People are shocked that a freeway ramp is being proposed and planned right next to Fremont Elementary with no clear public process. And other cities like Mari Park have shown a better way with this pot of funding. They've reallocated their lane expansion projects into bike lanes on Mari Pass Road, Garvey Avenue, Petronal Grande Avenue. They listen to the residents, and I'm just curious why Alhambra hasn't done the same. For the last four years, the project has been pushing forward, in my opinion, without transparency. I urge the council, especially Councilmember Noy Wong, who represents my area, to uphold the promise of being transparent and responsive to the people. Councilmember Wong, I know you've spoken about the importance of listening to residents, and I'm hoping this is your chance to do that. So, what I'm asking is simple, to please postpone the vote. Take the time to go back to the community, hold meetings, notify affected residents, hear what they have to say. Don't finalize more funding for a freeway ramp project that your constituents have never been consulted on. So, let's take the moment to do this right, slow down, breathe, and listen to the people. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we've reached the 30-minute initial timeframe for public comment.
Thank you. Before I move on, I just want to, I think those speakers are gone, I'm not sure they're here. But I will follow up on the issue of F-45 noise, noises with the city manager later Do we have any speakers via Zoom that wish to speak?
We do, but we will pick up with the Zoom speakers at the end of the meeting when we continue the public comment for non-enchanted.
Our next item is a public hearing regarding the adoption of the budget for fiscal years 2025 through 2026 and 2026 through 2027, and the fiscal year 2025 through 2026 appropriation limit. The city manager is there, report from staff on this item.
There is. This evening's presentation will be given by Finance Director Pearl Lu. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, city manager, and city attorney. Tonight, the City Council will hold a public hearing to consider approval of Resolution R2 M25-26, which adopts the fiscal year 2526 and 2627 operating budget and CIP plan. During the May 6, 2025 workshop, the City Council provided direction to staff to allocate 1.3 million to fund specific strategic plan initiatives. In response, staff has revised the proposed budget to incorporate this funding and will present updated budget. Next slide, please. This slide shows the spending plan for all funds. For fiscal year 2526, projected revenue is at 206 million with operating revenue expenditures at 176 million, with CIP expenditure of 58 million. Total expenditure at 235 million with a reduction in the budget for all funds of 28.4 million. For 2627, revenues are coming in at $183 million with expenditure of 177 million with CIP expenditure of 16.7 million, total expenditure at 194 million with a reduction of the budget of $11 million. Expenditures exceed revenues due to current year and prior year deferred CIP projects now underway are commencing soon. Next slide. This slide shows the chart of all the special, the different various funds for the budget. We have general fund with $104 million in expenditures, and special revenue funds at $39 million, enterprise fund at $44 million, and then we have internal service fund and capital project fund. For 2627, you will see that the expenditure is also exceeding the revenues in all the funds. And this is also due to the carryovers of the CIP projects. Next slide, please. For this slide, we will provide a budget overview of the unassigned general fund. Projected general fund revenues are coming in about $97 million with net general fund expenditure of $100 million, bringing a current year deficit of $3.1 million. We had a prior year carryover of $7.6 million, bringing the surplus at, ending the year with $4.5 million. For fiscal year 2627, general fund expenditure revenues is coming in at $99.5 million with net expenditure of $103.2 million, current year deficit at $3.6 million, and utilizing last year carryover surplus of $4.5, ending the year at $854,000. Next slide, please. This slide shows the general fund revenue sources with the top three revenue sources as property taxes bringing in about $34 million, sales and use tax bringing in about $20 million, Measure AL at about $13.5 million. Next slide, please. This pie chart shows the fiscal year 2526 general fund expenditure totaling $1.104.9 million. Of this pie chart, police department, police is at about $47 million, fire at almost $28 million, general government at about $6 million, community development 7.6, parks and rec 9.2, library at 4.3, and public works at 2.3 million of general fund. Next slide, 2627. Expenditure is totaling $105 million with PD at 49 million, fire at 29, community development at 7.5, parks at 9.8, and library at 4.5, and public works at 2.4. And the next slide shows the, next slide, please. The next slide shows a fire financial forecast of the general fund with fiscal year 2526 ending at 4.5 million, 2627 ending with 854,000, and the latter three years is a forecast, 2728 ending with a deficit of 610,000, 2829 891,000, and 2930 at 852. So, this is slightly less than 1% of the general fund. Next slide, please. Fiscal year 2526 is coming in at about $58.7 million for all CIP projects with all funds. Of this, it's slightly high and normal because we have the Alhambra Community Center, about $21 million is the cost for the community center. And then, we have other costs like public works, CIP projects, utility, sewer and water, maintenance, infrastructure improvements. And then, the next slide, 2627 is more of a more normal CIP plan, about $16.8 million, of which general fund is coming in, we're utilizing 1.9 million general fund for like items like fire leases, fire truck leases, financial software, PD renovation, facility upgrades, and then public works, street maintenance, about $2.87 million, and then sewer maintenance infrastructure improvements, again, at about $11.75 million. Next slide, please. For the upcoming fiscal challenges, there are the following items, tariffs, the inflationary prices that continues, continued CalPERS liability increases, continued liability workers comp increases, this year increased about $6.2 million, continued liability workers claims, aging infrastructure, deferred maintenance of facility equipment, unfunded mandates, and then the last is recession is uncertain, but possible. And the last slide. Tonight, staff is requesting City Council approve Resolution R2 M25-26 to adopt the annual budget for the City of Alhambra Golf Course Clubhouse Corporation, Alhambra Capital Improvement Corporation, Alhambra Parking Authority, Alhambra Facility Financing Authority, and Alhambra Public Finance Authority for fiscal years 2526 and 2627, the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2526 through 29, 2029 through 30. And then, for also, for City Council to approve Resolution R2 M25-23 to establish the appropriation limit and approve the annual adjustment factors used in the calculation of the appropriate appropriation limits provided by Department of Finance. So, this concludes staff's presentation of the budget presentation. Does the council have any questions?
Thank you, Director Pearl. I will now open the public hearing.
We don't have any speaker cards for this item.
Okay. There, oh.
Wow, the cash flow, huh? Listen to these millions of dollars just rolling out of Alhambra, but at the expense of the property taxpayers and the interest of property tax. We see that the vehicle tax is quite a profit on taxing because, yes, people like to drive. And in Alhambra, like any other city in the state of California, there are more than eight or 10 vehicles sitting in people's front yards. Where's the traditional American way? You buy a home, you own a home, you buy a new vehicle, you have your jalopy there, and you treat your neighbor with respect because you've paid your property tax. But instead, it seems like these property taxes and the interest of this adoption of the budget seems to create havoc in neighborhoods. Extreme havoc. People fighting over parking issues, people fighting over blight, people fighting over graffiti, people fighting over the way the city's public works department conducts its business. But the reality is, it's none of my business, but it is our business. We, the people of the United States of America and the state of California, that pay property taxes to this fucked-up state. So, with the millions of dollars allocated to police funding, wow, that pie up there, did you see that pie up there, folks? That pie represents law enforcement, the same law enforcement that was attacked by goddamn illegal people doing illegal things in multiple illegal cities because they believe they have the right to dump on the police. Now, I support police, but there are a few bad apples in their crowd. And I speak highly of those who can remain honored, justice, and for all, and provide a public service. As you heard earlier, the dispute about people saying that the police are not attending to their calls for loud noise or disturbing the peace. Well, that has to change. I think Jessica took good notes on that, right, Ms. Binquist, city manager? After all, we did give you a raise last year, a significant raise. And there's a way that the city manager should allocate the appropriations in a manner that respectfully honors and respects the neighbors who pay property taxes to get services and services done immediately so that we don't have over expenditures like that asshole in Sacramento, Gavin Newsom, who says that California is doing great. If we are doing so great, let me give you the scenario. How does the second-largest city in California cry out to the governor and to the Capitol to give us $1 billion for our $1 billion fuck-up? That's amazing.
It looks like there's a couple raised hands on Zoom for this item. The first is Randy K. The first is Randy K.
Is this for the non-agendized items?
Uh, no, this is for item number two, the budget hearing.
No, my hand's been up since the beginning of the meeting, so I'll just wait till the end.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next raised hand is from Edward S. Carcega.
Yeah, it's also not, this is not about the budget issue.
Okay, thank you. There aren't any other raised hands on Zoom at the time, at this time.
All right, thank you. Um, there's no one else remaining that we should speak on this item. I will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Does the council have any comments or questions for staff on this item?
I think, um, I don't have too many comments, partially because we had a good study session on the budget a few um months, weeks ago, um, which I found extremely helpful, this public session, um, and I hope it was helpful to my colleagues as well. I think the budget's really well done. I appreciate the fact that we are staying in good financial shape, that we have surplus in our general fund, and we're really planning for the future years, even though, as one of the slides showed, there's a lot of uncertainties coming down the line, but I think we're as well prepared as we can be at this point. And, you know, I'm not reveling in any other cities' troubles, but a lot of municipalities are struggling with their budget, so I appreciate the fact that we're doing well at this point in time. So thank you to the staff for putting this budget together. Thank you to the leadership team for keeping us afloat and in the black. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Pearl, for a great presentation. We had plenty to read on the weekend, and like Councilman Vice Mayor mentioned, we did have a robust, um, a robust meeting. So I do want to thank you also for this. This looks great, you know, of course, our police and fire are our lodges pies, as they should be. And I do have a question about the use of the, it's on page, I think it's page sixteen, and it's regarding the Inclusionary Housing Trust Fund. I just, I see that it's ninety thousand, and so I'm wondering how we are planning to use that, and I know that's not your job to decide how we use it, but maybe I can ask if Mr. Ho is here to help us? If not, maybe the city manager can answer the question, how we're utilizing, because if people remember, we established this many years ago, asking our developers to pay their fair share of fifteen percent at least of affordable housing stock in each development. And so I wanted twenty, but we got fifteen. And, um, and if they're not going to provide that, if they're unable to provide that, that they put those dollars in a trust for affordable housing down, down as we continue to build our units for our families. So I'm not sure, maybe our city manager can answer that question.
Sure, not a problem. I'm sorry, Director Ho is outside speaking to the residents from the Main Street Collection about the noise violations we heard in public comment. Our in-lu account is currently at ninety thousand dollars. Those funds are intended to be banked, and it would be our expectation that we would at some point contribute that money to an affordable housing project similar to how we contributed funds with the Lantern Terrace Project and also the Mariposa Project. So in the future, when we have another project, we will take any of the money that is available in the in-lu fund, and that would possibly be a portion of the city's contribution to our next affordable housing project.
Do you think we need to put that on the strategic plan to help move it, or would you recommend that we do something like that, or is it just as developments come up or as areas come up for us to build?
The expansion of affordable housing is already an item on your strategic plan. In the event that a developer were to approach the city and be interested in building a project, then we could have conversations with them at that time about the city's contribution and the possibility of utilizing the in-lu fee in addition to other affordable housing funds that the city holds.
Very good. Thank you so much. And just so that folks, not everybody goes on social media, so I wanted to share with everyone that we just cut the ribbon on forty-four units of supportive housing for low income. It's on chapel. We're very proud to have that come to fruition. We've been working very hard to provide that, so thank you, city manager, for helping us do that. Pearl, that's, those are all the questions I have for today. Thank you.
No questions for me other than just great job, as always, with the budget, and, you know, very happy that we were able to kind of separate and slice out that one point three million for us to help improve and continue improving the community. Thank you.
No questions. I, like Vice Mayor said, that we've already had a deep dive into the budget a couple weeks ago, so appreciate all the information and the stuff that staff put together to help us understand where we are with all the budget. So just want to thank staff for your hard work. It's not easy as we balance our community's priorities with limited resources, so good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for your presentation, as always. I think the five-year financial forecast is looking very healthy, so revenues projected go up as we know that we need to continue to provide public services to our residents, so we have to spend the money appropriately. And I noticed that around the city, there have been quite a bit of a project going on, so I do thank the residents for, you know, accepting that temporary inconvenience of driving around the roadblocks so that our work can continue with the city, especially with the water main and whatever that the crew is working on. So I do appreciate the, um, the, uh, the timing of it, and so that we can continue to work our infrastructure. If there's no other questions or comment from the council, I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Andrade Sadler.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Wang.
Yes.
Mazza.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes. Our first presentation is the Neighborhood Watch Meetings update. We have Lieutenant Rodney Castillo with the Police Department here to give the presentation. Lieutenant Castillo, please begin when you're ready.
Good evening. Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor Catherine Lee, city council, city attorney, city clerk, and city manager. I'm here to discuss with you guys and everyone here in attendance our area command model that we do at the Police Department. What it's going to be is a summary of the Neighborhood Watch Meetings throughout the year, the areas that beats one, two, three, and four, they're actually area command, and where they're located, citizen concerns, and how the Police Department responds to it. Next slide.
Next slide, please.
Next slide. Uh-oh. Oh, there we go. All right, so if you guys look at the screen, the area command map is showing as the following: the northeast is beat one, area one, number two is southeast, the northeast or northwest is three, and the southwest is four. Next slide. So area one is everything north of Mission and east of Atlantic. The area commander for that area is Lieutenant Grant Spencer. Next slide. Citizen concerns from this area is residential burglaries, the entertainment district regarding homeless people, story parks, suspicious subjects, and traffic concerns on Alhambra Road, Story Place and Granada Avenue. Next slide. In regards to these concerns, this is how the Police Department responds to it: residential burglaries, extra patrol in residential areas with patrol units, e-bicycles, volunteers, and drones, the entertainment district with the homeless. We have the community policing section, the home team, and La Cota continuously contacting individuals on a daily basis. For Story Park, a beat officer alert was addressed, and frequently checked for suspicious subjects. And for traffic concerns, the traffic section conducting traffic enforcement and working with traffic engineering to address the issues. Next slide. For area two, that's going to be the southeast, that's south of Mission, east of Atlantic Boulevard, that's Lieutenant Ruben Soriano. Next slide. Uh, the citizens concerned for this area is Planet Fitness Parking Lot, a lot of vehicle thefts, or I should say auto burglaries that occur there. There's car meets in the parking lots. We're in contact with the parking lot, or actually the property management of those areas, the electrical boxes and wire thefts. Next slide. For Planet Fitness, again, we do extra patrols there in the parking lot with patrol units, e-bicycles, and the drone, that prevention with the use of social media. In regards to the car meets in the parking lots, area commander has contacted the property management companies to resolve the issue. And electrical boxes, wire theft, we're doing extra patrols there in the areas regarding the thefts. Next slide. Area three, that's everything north of Mission and west of Atlantic. I am in charge of that area. And next slide. The citizens concerned in this area is residential burglaries. We do have a lot, high, uh, we do have a high volume of calls in regards to the department stores. We have homeless, mental health, traffic issues on Raymond Avenue and around the area of Park Elementary School. Next slide. And the response to these, the residential burglaries, again, we do extra patrol in the residential areas with patrol units, e-bicycles, volunteers, and the drones. The department stores, we have extra patrol there. We put, we provide police decoy vehicles to prevent thefts. We also have detectives that go out there to conduct surveillance at the stores. In regards to homeless and mental health, community policing section, home team, and La Cota continues to contact individuals daily, providing resources. And regarding to the traffic issue, again, it's the traffic session conducting traffic enforcement and working with the traffic engineering to address these issues. Uh, next slide. The final area is going to be area four, which is south of Mission, west of Atlantic Boulevard, which is Lieutenant Kevin Lang's area. Next slide. Now, this, citizen concerns in regard to this area was the residential burglaries and traffic issues on Westmont and Hellman and Montezuma Avenue and El Paso. Next slide. Again, with these residential burglaries, extra patrol in the residential area with patrol units, e-bicycle, volunteers, and drones, traffic issues, extra patrols in the residential area with patrol units, e-bicycles, volunteers, and drones. And also, there was recently a Reese Hall Neighborhood Watch Meeting that was very well-attended, and a lot of these issues were addressed. Next slide. In regards to these, a lot of the area command citizen issue is probably one of the number one things is the residential burglaries. In regards to the residential burglaries, you look at the screen, uh, one of the events that occurred, and there was a series of residential burglaries, was at the Midwick Collection. Detectives used department resources and were able to identify these suspects. Our SWAT team served a search warrant over there in the city of Reseda, and three subjects were arrested, and multiple items from the residence were retrieved at the residence of these suspects. Another one is another residential burglary that occurred. A person was pretending, this is going to be in area four, was pretending to be a food delivery service. She called APD regarding this activity. Once the police got there, had two suspects run from the police. The actual food delivery person who was posing got arrested, and the two suspects were apprehended with assistance of our K-9. And then another residential burglary that arrest that occurred was in area two, where suspicious subjects were in the area of the eighteen-hundred block of South Cordova. Our actual drone first responder program, the drone got up there first, located these subjects trying to break into a house. Once the police arrived, they took off running, a perimeter set, and they were actually apprehended with the use of K-9. Again, in area two, we're talking about the copper wire theft. A citizen called stating there were suspects removing copper wiring on Ramona Road in six. Patrol officers got there, located one suspect, and multiple spools of copper wire, and that person was arrested. A lot of these actual incidents, the Police Department does need the help of the community being the eyes and ears so we could get there and locate these suspects. In regards to the response, again, the resources that we have are the drone first responder program, LASD Aero Bureau, we have our K-9s, we have e-bicycles, we have extra patrol that our officers provide when they're not on radio calls. Next slide. In regards to traffic enforcement and community policing, we have our motor officers, we also have a traffic officer, La Cota, Department of Mental Health, our home team, traffic safety grants, and working with the traffic engineering with the city. And that should be concluding my presentation.
Thank you for your presentation. At this time, do we have any speaker cards from the public for this item? We have two. Pam Bondi.
Yes, good evening, and we understand that Pamela Bondi, the Attorney General of the United States, has said to all law enforcement, "Thank you for your service." Now, on my view on law enforcement, is that, yes, they have an important job, which is to serve and protect, but we already know that there's just an out of control in California where, once again, the targeted people and the targeted population are the homeless, whether it's Mr. Mazza's young son, or maybe Mr. Maloney's girlfriend on drugs, or Ms. Wang's children running at large through the streets with wire theft. We can only conclude that we are not safe, because if we were safe, once again, looking at all those stereotypes on television about police being harmed by civilian, whether they're immigrants or not, that illegal action to throw rocks and burn police cars and yell up vulgarity at them is criminal, very criminal. Now, if your actions are a First Amendment free speech, yeah, you can say fuck the police, it's free speech, but when you take the action on a physical point and hurt any officer, any law enforcement, anyone in the community of law enforcement, then you are pushing buttons like two individuals from Pasadena, a councilman's two daughters, one is arrested for attempting to bring harm to a police officer. And she came out of LA City Council, the fourteenth district, a so-called lawyer Filipino lady there, don't know shit. Her staffer was trying to bring harm to a police officer, whether it's federal or the police in the community. It's wrong, unacceptable, and your apology is not accepted. I can't wait to read the news when she does her three to 10 years for obstructing a police officer in the capacity of a federal problem. These riots were a federal problem. You don't fuck with the police in a federal. You will do the time for your crime. But going back to the department to address the concerns in our community, yes, officers behind me and officers out in the field, this community wants you to serve us, and you serve us in the capacity of helping homeless people, as federal judge David O. Carter addressed for two weeks against the city of Los Angeles and the LA County Board of Supervisors, those dumb scumbags, Hilda Elsa Leece, Janice Hahn, Holly Mitchell, and the other bimbo barfer who's supposed to be protecting us. But again, why are death and burglaries happening in every city? Why? Because our city city managers allow it to happen. Your public works department make it happen, because they take too long to address the issue, and the perpetrators keep coming back the following day to strip a mile of wire, and then these assholes in this recycling business still are wired and make a profit, a hefty profit. All you have to do is send your public works department out there, your Department of Building and Safety out there, and investigate, where is this copper wire coming from? Why are you sending it to China? Who the fuck permits that? Well, I'll give you the answer. Well, I'll give you the answer. Gavin Newsom. Local elected officials do that kind of bullshit. And that's the bullshit our police officers have to entrust from you council people? You heard the story, what a councilwoman's staff did. It's a real story, and these are real complaints, and these are real accountability that we hold you accountable for. So on behalf of Alhambra residents, I'm speaking out loud on their behalf. Because if any of them had the balls tonight, they'd get up here and speak on this matter. It's very important. Thank you, police officers, and thank you, chief.
I didn't expect a few laughs this evening, but I'm having them. Thank you very much. I submitted a card not knowing whether the Neighborhood Watch Meetings, um, went along with the Neighborhood Watch and the mitigation meetings. So, um, if I may, if you'll allow me, I'd like to make some comments on those five meetings. But, um, a real surprise for me on page 5 of the, uh, Area Command, to find out the citizens' concerns in the area where I reside, residential burglaries that I don't know anything about. Raymond and Vine is just a hop, skip, and a jump from my home, and something's going on over there. I don't know about that. Park Elementary School, I hear them every day, so something's going on over there. I would like for you to consider, um, communicating with Around Alhambra, because apparently we don't have any control over what they put in the newspapers, and I'm taking that comment from the last time I was here and I was addressing these five meetings that were coming up. Why that notice wasn't in the newspaper, and why, if we could, if you could discuss with them putting in the crime report in the Around Alhambra that we had for many years? Doesn't take up that much room. I'm finding back editions of Around Alhambra several years ago, and didn't take up that much room. But that would be very helpful, because I can, you can sit there and say, well, that's on my block. Let me find out why I didn't hear about it. Let me find, call somebody up at the top of the block or wherever. Or you know somebody, you know, there's a crime increasing your area. But we should have it back in the Around Alhambra. I'm tired of seeing the restaurants already, you know, which is the latest one serving the bribes or whatever. That's not news. I found another edition that's about six years old that was very informative. So, uh, I may just make copies of them and show you what it used to look like and the information that we, we got at that time. Um, and I think that's, but I would like to see it in the Around Alhambra, and, um, apparently this wasn't checked very closely after it was photocopied, because it's very difficult to read what's in the left-hand corner, the area, if you've looked at it. Please. So that, that is about it on that. But, uh, just a couple of comments. Oh, with regard to the paragraph here, it says, "The Alhambra Police Department has been conducting Neighborhood Watch Meetings throughout the city to educate, inform, and interact with residents and businesses." Well, we're not aware of that. Okay, residents and businesses? So how are they communicating with them? That, that's about all. I just wanted to get some clarification on that. And may I make some comments on the, Madam Mayor? All right, and this sort of goes in together. When I wasn't allowed to finish speaking at the last meeting, although I was informed that I wouldn't be able to, I questioned, because this was very important, why this wasn't posted, why it wasn't printed on the front page of the Around Alhambra. It says Neighborhood Watch and Hazard Mitigation Meeting. Okay, five districts, five different locations, time, and so on. And if you want the people to come out, you want to hear from everyone, put the information out there. I mentioned to you, council, at the, at this particular meeting, the only reason I found out about these meetings is because I happen to go to the police department. Otherwise, it wasn't posted in City Hall, in the lobby, on the doors as you do, the senior center, nothing over there, the various schools where you could have done that. So, uh, again, there wasn't any notification on this, to the extent that. And you all speak so much about, you know, going online, going, you know, email and going online. When we ask you a question, you tell us that's where we go for our information. Well, you know how many, and that's what you say, right? And in fact, I think Ms. Statler, when I was leaving, was shouting out about email, and you were walking out at the last meeting when I wasn't allowed to finish. The total attendance for five districts, five districts, I'm not saying five blocks, five districts, 68 people. And I think you were all shocked at the low count that showed up in your districts. The only one who had, uh, an amount to speak of was, um, I think it was Ms. Lee, perhaps, who had 20-something people. I'm not sure, right? Let's see, just give me one second, because these, these meetings, well, anyway, very low turnout. And your district, Ms. Statler, only five people from your district showed up, and you all talk about, you know, go to our website, get all the information. So, um, this report from the police department that was handed out to us at the meetings, stats for a whole month, but don't give us locations. I want to know where this is taking place. That's why I say, if you put the way you used to around the, in the Around Alhambra, gave the neighborhood, gave the 100 block, and you knew just about what was going on. But to just give you a sheet and say there's a, you know, calls, total calls for service for the month, 4,253, doesn't tell me anything. Plus, perhaps in another meeting, because my time is up, you take a look at the, um, report that was on mitigation. We only had an hour for that. That person took up most of that hour. There was very little left for Neighborhood Watch that was listed on this item. 15 minutes, that's all we had. And each report was different. I don't think any of you got together to look at the reports, because the report for certain of you, pages were missing, for others for you, the print was microscopic, who couldn't read it. It was just, um, not professional at all, in my opinion. So I feel, I'd like to know who put that whole program together, because it was very unprofessional.
Do we have any speakers via Zoom?
Uh, there's one raised hand from Randy K. I'm not sure if that's left over for public comment for non-agendized, or?
Yes, um, I do want to speak about, um, non-agendized items, but I do want to mention something about the Neighborhood Watch Meetings update. Um, and I live in Area 4. We have kind of an unofficial Neighborhood Watch, 7th, 8th, and 9th Street. We all know each other by name, we all know what's going on. We are having problems with some drug activity. I would like to mention at this point that if anyone in the public is listening to this, if they see anything that is white powder in any kind of container or dollar bill that's all folded up, don't pick it up, because it could be fentanyl, and it could be fatal. The best thing is to do is to call the police, let them know what you see, have them come and pick it up. Um, you know, not many people have Narcan at home that will address if someone overdoses on fentanyl. So just let the police know and let them take care of it. Um, in Area 4, we are having some drug activity problems, some homeless problems. We have several Airbnbs around our area, so people are transient, we don't know who they are, we don't know if they're being vetted appropriately. We do have illegal parking problems, e-bikes on the sidewalk, and I, I have called in this problem before along Midwick Hill. I walk my dog there sometimes in the morning. All along Midwick Hill, people do not slow down at the stop signs, they drive right through them doing 30, 35, 40 miles an hour. And all of these comments have been called in to the crime number that's provided by the police department. So I don't think that Neighborhood Watch is picking up the comments that are being provided by residents from that crime number that we can call in and report something. So if that could be added to, like, the Neighborhood Watch things like, that are unofficial, that would be really great. Thank you.
Are there aren't any other raised hands on Zoom for this item?
Does the council have any comments or questions at this time on this item?
Yeah, I just would like to thank the police department for coming into Area 3 and 4. We had two big meetings that, that resulted in, I think we've all realized that we're your partners, we're your eyes and ears, because you cannot be everywhere, and, um, that's not excusing anything, it just is the reality. If you remember what happened on Westmont or above in that area in Charnwood, um, it was actually the residents who caught the burglars, or those two kids running, or those, I don't know, they weren't really children, they were adults, running through the, you know, to hide in, behind houses. And it was actually the ring that caught them on several, um, on several occasions, so we could see them. And, you know, so this really does matter. And we're not always going to have Neighborhood Watch Meetings, because it just requires so much of people's time to come out. And, and it really is a lot to do with time. Um, so we have to be vigilant and keep our eyes and ears open, and call your area command person. They were mentioned today by Officer Castillo, and I'm sorry, are you Sergeant Castillo? Okay, sorry. Lieutenant, jeez, you go fast. Lieutenant Castillo, you did mention who those area command people are, officers are, and they're extremely important. Um, I also want to say, so thank you so much. And, you know, I have to take issue with, um, one of the comments, because our consultant from, was a director, original director from FEMA, our consultant was incredible, um, at the Emory Park, even though we had a small turnout of residents. I wish, I'm hoping that the residents got enough information on our FEMA, on the information about Area Command, and what was important, what our, what to look for, and how we are in a fire zone, we are in an earthquake zone, and all those things really do matter for us to know about, because it helps us prepare better. Um, I want to thank you again, officers, for, for really hearing us when we asked for the Neighborhood Watches to expand. And people, you have to step up, you have to raise your hand, you have to, if you're going to be a captain, you've got to be responsible for a street. You don't have to be responsible for four streets or five streets, just take your street, and, um, and it'll, it really does help. Thank you very much.
Well, I wanted to thank our staff for this wonderful presentation, and I also just really want to thank all, all of our officers, our police department. Since the beginning of this year, we've, um, started to really expand and reactivate our Neighborhood Watch programs, and it's just seeing tremendous effort from our PD coming out there to meet with our community. And I just want to share that some of the things I've been hearing from the community, all, all the meetings went really, really well. We've had a good number of meetings in the community, varying sizes, and just depending on people's availability and what's going on. But people just really appreciate that direct connection with our PD, and especially receiving safety tips from our police officers, and just hearing directly from them. Also, I, I really appreciate staff's thoughtfulness in bringing, always bringing, um, really helpful information out there, like upcoming events and just resources to share with the neighbors, and also window stickers for Neighborhood Watch programs, and all of those are very, very well received by the community. So definitely want to share that, and, um, really appreciate the effort. And I just, um, hearing the presentation, I do have some questions for staff. Um, I do see, you know, Area 1, 2, 3, 4, there are unique and special concerns for each area, but there are also universal, um, issues that come up repeatedly. One of them is the traffic concerns. I'm just wondering, for the traffic ones, is it just speeding, or there are other things, um, related to the traffic concerns for the different areas?
Majority of the traffic concerns, sometimes it's stop sign violations, sometimes it's speeding. It all depends on the actual area. And a lot of the questions we do get, and I think I was talking to Jeff about it last time at the Alhambra Park, is, uh, a way to get on the website to file the traffic complaint and get everything done that way? Uh, I'm not sure if it's up and running. It is?
Yes, that's, that's what, I appreciate the feedback. That's what I was going to mention, that we, um, just approved our traffic calming policy, our comprehensive traffic calming policy, and thanks to staff's hard work, the link is already up and running on the website. So want to share with all, everybody that you can submit a request on the website directly, and it'll go through a process to, um, go through and review the request, and hopefully we find a solution to, to address the problems. So with that, I think, um, maybe this is an opportunity for our engineering department to collaborate with our PD, and especially our PD are out there, they get all this input from the community, maybe they're already aware of the hotspots in the city that people run stop signs and speeding, and streets that have consistent, persistent problems, and we can collaborate with them and get their input as we implement the traffic calming The other question I have, and I want to get some clarification from staff, just hearing the comment from Ms. Randy Kang, that, um, I think I hear this all from the community as well, that, you know, we have emergency number, which is 911, people know to call that one. We also have a non-emergency, uh, PD number, people know to call that one, but if there are, say, issues that neighbors are observing, and they just really want to communicate with the city and let us know about, hey, be aware of this issue, or just enhance that communication, can staff clarify what would be the point of contact for that kind of communication channel?
It would depend on the actual issue. If it's traffic, we have our traffic section that could address those questions. If it's regarding mental health and homeless, it would be our community policing section that could address those, uh, issues. If it's also like extra patrol in certain areas or crime analysis, actually, for crime analysis, our investigations divisions could do that part and answer those questions. And for extra patrol, you could actually call our dispatch, and they could probably transfer you to watch commander, we'll log it in, and we'll let the beat officer know to do extra patrol in the specific area that people are requesting.
Understood, and I think all the numbers are listed on the Know Your Neighbor brochure that we've been passing out, and all the, I, I see all the numbers listed there, but for the, you know, for the ease for the community to know, I think it's sometimes it's very challenging for them to keep those informations. So I'm wondering if we can also have maybe a point of contact for Neighborhood Watch, maybe the coordinator for Neighborhood Watch be the point of contact, and they can collect information and, um, to, with our, maybe, social media campaign, we can put out those information for point of contact, so that everybody is clear of where to report, and those numbers will work as well. And then, um, my last question is, you guys have been out there going to the meetings and be out there on the streets. Have you seen any positive, have you had any positive observations of what's working really well in the Neighborhood Watch? really well in the Neighborhood Watch programs? Like, it has been working great, let's continue to do that? Would love to hear that. If not, that's okay.
A lot of the, a lot of the questions that people have is what we're doing regarding residential burglaries, because that is a topic that came up on all of the Neighborhood Watch meetings. And then we actually provide the answer, like what we had in the presentation. You see the actual drones, our drone first responder getting up in the air and assisting with the calls. Our Investigations Division, that Midwick Hill collection series was huge, and they figured out who it was, and the people got arrested. And then a lot of these calls, again, I was like Councilman Sneller said, we need the community's help for us to actually catch these people, because we can't be everywhere all the time, but when they do call, we try our best to catch these people doing the crime. So like the, those were just a couple of the notable incidents that occurred within the city. There's a lot more that happened, but those are the ones that, you know, we highlight that the citizen actually calls us, like the rain camera, you know, and they call with regarding suspicious subjects in the Area 2, where the actual suspects got behind the house and started breaking into the house. That's all on social media, you could probably see it all there, too. So there's a lot of things that occur, and then us letting them know that people are actually getting arrested is positive. So we want to let them know that it is happening, they're not just getting away.
Yeah, I am aware of that incident that happened at Midwick Collection. I think that's really a success story that we've had, and that's really a huge collaboration between the community and our police department. And I think that's also due to a very successful Neighborhood Watch meeting that happened in the community, where we shared with them, like basically, like you Lieutenant Castillo said, that we encourage you to call us, and please call us, any suspicious activity, just if you're not sure, just call us, give us a call, we'll come out, we'll look at it, we'll come up with solutions, we'll go from there. So, and the community did that, having had that meeting and had that direct channel established with PD. So that really is a success story. I really, really appreciate our PD's effort in supporting the community and keeping them safe. I think with the Neighborhood Watch program beyond safety, what we're also really doing is creating connections between neighbors, and we're building a network of neighbors who can help each other and look out for each other, not just to keep us safe, but also in emergencies, and how we do not leave anyone behind. And once we have this network set up, I think as we go through the community with these meetings, we have been collecting emails, and we have been identifying block captains. Once we have this network set up, we can also tap into this network for communication. I know it's always been a goal of the city to expand our public outreach, we're doing everything we can with newsletter, with social media, and website, and everything we can. And this is just another opportunity for us to reach every corner in our city, and every single neighbor in our city. So I would like to see us staff to be proactive in communicating with block captains. If we have important messaging we want to send out to the community, important meetings, upcoming events, let's utilize that network, send it out to the block captains, and let them disseminate into the neighborhood. And they have, they also have the neighbors' contact information, so they will do part of that work, and it will allow them to stay connected as well. So that's, I'd love, I'd love to see that we do more of that, and maybe we could also start to recognize some of our block captains in our council meetings, just like how we recognize our staff and other things. So just a way to show that we really support this community effort, and recognize the hard work our community is doing to collaborate with us and keep everybody safe. Thank you.
And same thing, just want to thank you for all the time put into organizing these meetings, you know, the receptiveness and the action taken, the quick action taken by the police department for all of the residents' concerns are second to none. I agree with Councilmember Wang as far as the connection that is created with the community. I've said that over and over, the connection with not only the business community, but our residents as well is second to none. So I appreciate that, I hope to continue seeing these meetings moving forward in the upcoming years, and just to keep expanding on the resources, you know, and whatever resources that we as a council, hopefully we can provide to you and the police department. You know, I hope that we can all be supportive as a, as a group, as a body, to make sure that you can do your job and have all the resources necessary at your disposal. Thank you.
Well, thank you Lieutenant Castillo for making the presentation. I just want to make two quick points. First of all, I'm just really interested in seeing that we're using drones now in fighting crimes, so that's something that I really kind of excited to see that in Alhambra. Second point is, I really think that the police department is doing a good job in reaching out to the residents and going to their places, instead of having them reporting crimes. And so I attended the Neighborhood Watch meeting in a complex, in a room, and also enjoy also meeting the residents coming to police in the park as well. And I think somebody mentioned the connection, and also I think the resident somehow need to have that connection with the police department, and having the council members also being there is also helpful. When I was there at Story Park during our Area 1 Command Neighborhood Watch meeting, it's interesting how someone came to me with a cell phone with a photo, but that person couldn't email me. But I think there's something about the resident need to see the visible, that we be visible in front of them and be friendly, that we mean no harm, there's no threat in reporting anything. So I think that the turnout was really good, and I was able to forward some of the points that the resident made to me to Lieutenant, Lieutenant, at that point. And so, and I think that we should continue with that very informal, friendly atmosphere, so that more and more people are able to come forward and talk to police about their concerns. So good job, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
At this point, I need a motion from the council.
Oh, I think, I think this is just an informational report.
Just to receive and file a report.
Okay, so no motions required, no voting is required. This is an informational report from the city council, so no vote is required. The next presentation is regarding the ridership transportation study for Alhambra Community Transit. We have Mr. Xander Dally with Kim Lee Horn here to make the presentation. Mr. Dally, please begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Actually, he's going to be introduced after a brief introduction by Deputy Director of Public Works for Transportation, Jane Chan.
That makes sense, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jane Chan, and I'm the new Deputy Director of Transportation. I'm very excited to be part of the city's efforts to advance the multimodal transportation. The city's goal is to expand mobility options and to enhance road safety, making it safer and easier for people to move around Alhambra, whether by foot, bike, bus, or car. Within this broader vision, Act Bus plays a critical role, and we see opportunities to make it better and increase ridership. So we have our consultant, Kim Lee Horn, to evaluate the existing transit network and identify unserved areas to improve the service and increase ridership. So tonight, Xander, he will present their findings and recommendations, and I will return with our next steps.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. My name is Xander Dally with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. I did most of the technical work on this Alhambra Community Transit Ridership Study, and so tonight I'd just like to give you a brief presentation on the study, as well as our recommendations. Next slide, please. So to give a brief overview of the existing ACT service, ACT currently operates two lines, the Green Line, the Blue Line. The Green Line is a bidirectional circulated route, takes four buses to run, two in each direction, serves most of the day, Monday through Friday, and provides limited service on Saturday. It runs primarily on arterial streets in the city, so Valley Boulevard, Fremont, Main Street, as well as a few other streets as well. This one has the higher of the two ridership figures, sits around twenty-one hundred, or sorry, twenty-one thousand average monthly riders, and like the Blue Line, has a 25 cent cash-only fare. Next slide, please. So the Blue Line operates a sort of a shuttle service between downtown Alhambra and CSU-LA. This route takes three buses to run. It provides more peak hour service, so Monday through Friday from 6:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m., as well as in the evening peak from 2:30 to 7:00, and it also runs every 20 minutes. This service currently runs on Commonwealth and Fremont, with some limited service on Garfield and Hellman, and this one has an average monthly ridership of about 4,500 riders. Next slide, please. So in order to put together this, these recommendations, we went through three different assessments. So there was a transit market assessment, a ridership and operations analysis, and a stakeholder and rider engagement, and I'll give an overview of some of the factors that went into each one. So for the transit market assessment, we looked at population and employment density figures that were available on the, sorry, the ACS website, through the U.S. Census Bureau. We looked at the frequency and coverage of the existing transit service, not just offered by ACT, but also from Metro and Monobello, which operate services in the city. And then we looked at the existing travel flows, where people in Alhambra like to travel within the city, but also to major regional destinations. As far as the ridership and operations analysis, we looked at the figures that ACT reported to the National Transit Database, as far as their ridership and operational costs, and we did look at that relative to five, or sorry, four peer agencies within Southern California that operate a similar scope of service. So those were Burbank, Corona, Commerce, and El Monte. And then we looked at, or excuse me, through that analysis, we found that ACT was operating its services relatively efficiently. Then we looked at the ridership and demographics of Senior Ride, which is the city's demand-response service. It offers shuttle van service to residents 60-plus and all-disabled residents. And then finally, the stakeholder and rider engagement, we developed three different surveys in English, Spanish, and Mandarin Chinese. The first was an onboard survey that we gave directly to riders on the Green Line. The second was an intercept survey that we took to several large grocery stores in the city to solicit feedback from residents. And then the third was a survey directly given to the bus operators that gave us some feedback on some operational characteristics of the system. What we uncovered from that was some demographics of the survey participants, as well as their desired destinations. They gave us several destinations that they would like to see ACT provide service that they don't currently provide. Now, what we did was develop three different service alternatives. There were two revenue-neutral alternatives and an enhanced service alternative. Now, the revenue-neutral ones are done in a way that we can modify the existing service without increasing costs, and the enhanced service alternative would require more capital investment to purchase additional buses to run the system, and it'll obviously incur higher operational costs. So after some discussions with First Transit and staff at ACT, we determined that the revenue-neutral option B was our best option. To give a brief overview of this one, I'll show a diagram on the next slide. But we essentially proposed to reroute the Green Line in a northwest corner of the city, a slight deviation, instead of on Palm and Commonwealth, we'd be looking at routing up Fremont and on Poplar. And then the Blue Line is a more substantial service, sorry, a more substantial change. Instead of being routed on Commonwealth and Fremont, where we see some duplication of service, through resident feedback and looking at these desired locations, we decided that it might be appropriate to route the bus on Garfield and Hellman, and that would provide some additional service to the south of the city, such as Granada Park, hit Atlantic Times Square, and Garvey, or sorry, Garfield Avenue, that has a lot of medical facilities. Currently, Monobello Bus Lines operates their Bus 30, I believe, on Garfield, but it's only once every hour. So residents told us that they, that that service was not efficiently serving them. And what this would do is preserve some of the more, I guess, ridership productive areas of the system, while expanding the overall service coverage. Next slide, please. So to give a brief overview of the changes in ridership estimates, as I said, the Green Line would only see a slight modification in the clockwise direction to serve Poplar Main, and that would provide a little bit better access to the northwest corner of the city. And we estimated that would increase ridership on the Green Line by about 6%. The Blue Line, we're looking at still maintaining that downtown to Alhambra to CSU-LA service, but instead of, like I said, routing on Hellman and Garfield rather than Commonwealth and Fremont. And then we were going to have a larger downtown loop to serve Alhambra Road, Chapel, and Granada, and this would also help serve some of the grocery stores in that area. This has a more substantial ridership increase by about 44%. This would increase the overall runtime of the Blue Line by six minutes, however, that's mainly in that expanded loop through the east part of Alhambra. Now, it's important to note that these ridership estimates, we're, were developed using a half-mile walk shed from each route, and that's scaled according to the population density within that area. So this is really just a high-level forecast for estimates only. And finally, we're still targeting a 20-minute headway for these services, however, that'll be determined through test runs that ACT conducts. I'm now going to hand it over to Jane Chan, who's going to go over next steps, and next slide, please.
Thank you. For next steps, we expect, we expect to implement the service by the end of the year, after CSU-LA finish their finals to minimize service impacts. We will push up the service for one year as a pilot. Our contractor, First Transit, and the city will work together to test run the service for new bus stop assessment and develop new timetables. And First Transit will also collect the ridership data by bus stop for city to evaluate the ridership changes pre and post-service. And with this launch, we will also introduce the real-time arrival information system, allowing customer to check bus arrival times on their phones, and platforms such as Google Maps, Transit App, and Apple Maps. And just a note, we also have an in-house app with the, with First Transit called Pass Yogo. A successful transit service also need effective marketing, and we will leverage existing city resources to promote the service, engage with the community, and attract new riders to Act Bus. And thank you for your time, and please feel free to let us know if you have any questions.
At this time, do we have any speakers cards? We have two for this item, number four. First one, Ms. Shirley Tatsuno.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and City Council members. You know, I'm glad that the bus service is expanded, but, and I've talked about this before, but I'm just going to say it anyway, but, you know, I really think the bus needs to come every 12 minutes rather than 20 minutes, which of course would cost costly. But this would encourage more ridership among people of cars, like me. I have often seen the buses with very few riders on Valley and Commonwealth. Today on Commonwealth, while I'm eating my Taco Bell breakfast, for the first time, I heard a rider say the bus was full, and their group had to split up and wait for the next. Although I've heard from Councilwoman Dell that it really gets full when the students are in school, riding, coming back and forth to school. You know, I ride the bus to our Y, YMCA, when I have a car repair at HH Motors on Valley Boulevard, which is next to my building, facing Valley, you know, and it's tricky to get to my Zumba class on time sometimes, because the bus comes early, and if you miss it, you have to wait, you know, 20 minutes, and that could mean that I'm late, so it kind of makes me flustered, because I like to get there on time. But when I go home, I walk from the Y home, because I don't like that bus stop at Vega, where the bus drivers, you know, they take their break for 10 minutes. So I just forget that, so I just walk home instead of going on the bus. But I kind of wanted to ask if we're going to have any special accommodations with transportation when the Olympics are here in 2028? I think one place visitors might really like to go to is the Nucleus Gallery. They have such interesting, popular exhibits. They have such interesting, popular exhibits and products for people from all over, you know, come to see. And, you know, I'm a real believer in mass transportation. I've been taking the Metro L from Atlantic in East LA since the parking lot first opened. Although last year, I became afraid because the homeless riders were making me more nervous. And then that Latino woman guard was, in the early morning, was killed when getting off the metro and the bus drivers were being attacked by the riders. So I stated this in my published letter to the LA Times, and I said that I had enough, but I would not ride. But you know, I couldn't stand it. I, I started riding again late last year. I often go to J-Town or Little Tokyo this way, and things have changed. No homeless riders, announcements that you must pay, and if they find that you do not pay, you could be asked to leave or be fined. And there's more metro people on the platforms, the trains are cleaners. And so I finally feel confident that this is the way to ride to the Olympic events that are along that route. But I can't convince anybody to ride with me. It's really frustrating, you know, and, and, you know, I took the metro train to J-Town for the No Kings Day, and it was sad to see the graffiti and the businesses boarded up, but I was glad to see the peaceful protesters. Thank you.
Our next speaker for this item is Mr. Louis McCammon.
Lou McCammon, 105 North Cordova Street. I was looking over in the online agenda pack at all the information about this item and the surveys they'd done and so forth. And I'm very pleased to see the suggested change they have in the blue line to facilitate more access in the northeast part of Alhambra, where it will go from the corner of Main and Chapel up to Alhambra Road, turn right, go across to Granada, turn right, go down, back down to Main Street, turn right again. And it'll give a loop. That particular, currently, there's no service at all on the Act bus line east of Chapel. This will give very significant service in that area. I think we'll encourage people in that area to utilize it. And one of the things I'm sure that they weren't taking into account, but will be a real plus on this coming up, is the Chinatown Service Center is still, in the near future, going to be activating its PACE program for at least 100 elderly residents per day. And I know they plan to transfer most of those with their own small buses and shuttle buses, but this would give an opportunity for more access in that area because that particular thing would be on the Main Street section between Hidalgo and Cordova Street there. So I'm glad to see this. One other thing that might be worth taking a look at again, I remember in our prior discussions on this, there was a suggestion about maybe even going with a no-fee alternative for riding the bus. And I think that need, we need to kind of keep that in mind and look at it because if suddenly the fee becomes free, it's not very much now. It doesn't bring in a huge amount of money. It does bring in some, doesn't pay for the system certainly, but we might get a further increase in ridership. I'm noticing that the increase in ridership on the blue line with these suggested changes is 44%. That's awfully significant. And if we eventually go to the free model, it's, you know, potentially further getting people out of their cars. And, you know, my wife and I are getting to that stage in life where things are, get a little more difficult. My wife has visual problems that are genetic, didn't kick in until well after she retired. She can no longer drive. She can't get a driver's license anymore. So I'm the designated driver. If I pass on, this will be a significant thing for her. Things like Senior Ride and the ACT system, if it will finally come down and service our area, those are the kind of things that Alhambra ain't getting too much younger on the average, so that could help on that end, too. Thank you very much.
Do we, do we have any speakers via Zoom that wish to speak on this item?
There is one raised hand at this time from Randy K.
I'm just waiting till the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. There aren't any other raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Does the council have any comments or questions for staff on this item?
I think this is, this survey, this study is really thorough and well-done, so thank you very much. I appreciate this. I think we took this up some time ago, and this is much more what we were looking for out of, out of the study, at least from my perspective. Couple of questions. So I noticed that, that we did, the recommendation is for the, the revenue-neutral option B, is that right? Just for fun, can you walk through a non-revenue-neutral option that may have been considered? What that might have looked like? For when we win the lottery?
So I believe the revenue, sorry, the enhanced service alternative that we developed preserved the Green Line as-is, modified the blue line slightly to travel down Commonwealth, but then use Atlantic to access Hellman and then go to CSU LA. And then we created a third orange line service that kind of served as that shuttle between downtown Alhambra, down Garfield, and down Hellman to the Granada Park area. That service would require three additional buses to run as opposed to the current system that requires seven to run. So that was, that was our enhanced service.
Going from seven to 10 buses total?
Yes.
And then what, maybe, staff, what would be the cost for that, that additional route? Again, just curious.
So we did a calculation for that with three buses and, and tried to do like a Green Line service hours, which is like 7:00 a.m. to, to night. It would be around 500 to 700 K per year.
And then?
So it's like a 35 to 40% increase.
Okay. And did you do any estimates of increased ridership with that extra line?
We, we did. We need to refer back to the detailed study to get the numbers for the alternate, enhanced alternative, but we can get back to you like after the meeting.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, it is, I'm more than comfortable moving ahead with the recommended proposal tonight, but that is something down the road I think we should keep in the back of our mind to expand ridership of, of, you know, these buses locally to, to cut down on traffic and make it more accessible to people who, who can't or don't drive. It's just nice information to have. I, I do appreciate this, this route. It is exciting to see the, the expanded, I'm looking at the black and white version, but I think that's the blue line that pushes farther east into northeast Alhambra area. That's great. I mean, it's going to capture a whole different area there, and I think those key points are like the Jostin Center at the CSC Health Center down there, and a lot of folks right in that little corner up there that previously didn't have access to it. That's great. And I love the idea of coming down Hellman for, as well, because that area was just completely skipped for a long time. You know, we'll see what happens. I know these, these are estimates. I, I do like those numbers. I'd like to check back, you know, if and when we implement this to see at a reasonable amount of time, like what it looks like at that point. But I think it's great, and this is, this is good. Anything we can do to increase ridership is fantastic. I did want to touch on the, the fee issue. Two points to that. We did talk about a no-fee alternative, and I know that, that, that idea has not always gone over well in certain, in other areas that have done it. Can someone speak to that in particular? And the second question I had is if we do stay with the 25 cent fee, which I think is perfectly reasonable, it's never going to recoup the, the cost of, of the program, but at least it sort of makes people have a little skin in the game, I guess. If we do keep that, can we, can we tap into the tap card program so that people don't have to buy a, a different system and carry quarters on them or something? So those, those two questions.
Yeah. So we are, we are looking into these options. Actually, before we have this meeting, we are actually going into, looking into alternatives for the fare structure for the bus. In general, in Southern California, the no-fee structure actually doesn't turn out as, as good as we thought, but we are going to dive into more to look into peer agencies, how they do it with their no-fee structures. So one thing that we may look into it is to look at what metro programs provide, especially like for low-income or for students. But it, I, I will bring back more information after I have research with more details and then come back to report. But that would be a program that offers a free pass for students, perhaps, which is like targeted to a specific group of people with free transit while everybody else is still paying the 25 cents. However, we will compare the models and take a look at the consequences of the no-fee alternative versus a fee alternative because there are people, like the riders react differently to different models.
Right.
And secondly, for the 25 cents fare with the tap card integration, the city will look into the tap integration because it helps to, if, to do some data collections in some sense, to know the ridership like during different time periods, like AM peak, PM peak, midday. And also, I agree with you on the integration with one-card product to use for the regional agencies, especially with the metro system. So this is something that the city will look into and come, and bring back in later time with the data analysis for the pre and post-service ridership evaluation.
Yeah, it just, I mean, I think our guiding principle in these discussions should be what is going to maximize our ridership and, and also, you know, balance safety and the other concerns as well. But I think that all flows into the, or to the idea of ridership, right? How do we get to that point? And obviously, it's keeping it safe, keeping it affordable, accessible, easy to use. And the more options a rider has, if they're walking down, saying, you know, I should take the ACT, and they don't have quarters, and they're not going to use it, maybe it's on their phone, or if they don't use technology, maybe they do, you know, and now you can add fare just through your smartphone, which is, makes it so much easier to, to ride these things. So I mean, it'd be great if we can tap into that. And then the only other thing I had, and I don't know, this is probably beyond the scope of what we're working on today, but I, I may have mentioned it here before, you know, it should be able to do it in a really easy way, but I, I don't see it really mastered locally. I may be missing it, but, you know, some sort of integration with an app, maybe a third-party app that shows real-time arrivals for buses. So if somebody, you know, the comment earlier is about 12 minutes or 20 minutes, and if bus is 19 minutes away, it's nice to know that, so I'm not rushing out. But if you could see, this bus will arrive at the station in six minutes, I know I got to get moving. The technology is there because when I use Waze on my phone, I'm driving, and pretty much on the dot tells me when I'm going to get there. So it can be done. I'm not asking us to create that necessarily, but if there's some way we can like tap into that.
So as part of the next step, perhaps I didn't elaborate long enough, we are actually going to implement that and integrate with the third-party app. So usually riders, I'm a transit rider, so I don't drive a lot. I also use a lot of buses. They usually use Transit App the most and also Google Maps and Apple, and Apple Maps or sometimes Move It. So our contractor, First Transit, they are partnering with a real-time contractor called Pass Yogo, and they will provide, we will set up the platform for the new service, and we will start to do all the real-time information system. And once we have those data, we call it API or GTFS real-time, and we will feed these information to the third-party provider, like Google Maps, Apple Maps, and Transit App. So whoever people, when you bring up the smartphone, then you can just open the app and find a bus.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be great to have like a one-stop app for a lot of things related to ACT, or I don't know how it would be done. I know that I have some of those apps, too. I don't ride the, the bus as often as you do probably, but I do on occasion. And it's the, the interface, sometimes it takes a little while to get used to, and it's a, it can be confusing. So I'm just, I would love to see a simplified thing that, that our, our folks could use like really easily. I think that'd be great. That's pretty much it. I, I like the proposals. Thank you for the, for the survey and the study. I'm excited about this.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to Kimberly Horn for coming in and taking this over. It's like night and day, the, the difference in the consulting firm and, and helping us do this. I understand you're going to be removing one of the lines that is actually in my district and, but I also understand that it's a duplication so that it's really not taking away a line but actually spreading the lines out a little bit more equitable. So I, I do appreciate that. In terms of the tap card for, you, you will need to talk to the superintendent of the school district because she needs, they need to be able to adopt that program in order for students to get that. I understand that because I asked her if she had, and they had not done that as of yet. So it would be with you two to be able to connect with her. And then also, I see that you're not going to start it for, until the end of the year, more or less. We need to have a big educational outreach to especially the schools, especially Alhambra High, because they did utilize, they do utilize the Commonwealth. Now, I will tell you, and they're probably going to be upset, but there's not a lot of students that I see on Commonwealth. I see them mostly on Main Street. I'm thinking, but, but you are removing it. So there's like a natural, you know, you know, that they're used to doing, the, the several kids that do actually take that, that Commonwealth bus home and in. So yeah, those are the only things that I would suggest, and thank you very much for this.
So I also want to thank you for the, for the presentation. Just very happy to see on the blue line, the expanded service into the northeast part of the city. I think that's going to go a long way. The Chinatown Service Center, I think, is going to benefit from that tremendously. Just people up there that haven't had access to the, to the service, but all in all, just very happy with the, the expanded service and looking forward to, as far as the next steps, the, the marketing campaign to promote the service. You know, we've got some time here before the end of the year, but just hoping that people really just get the message that this expanded service is out there. But thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it.
I would like to echo a lot of the comments already made by my colleagues and really happy to see expanded accessibility to especially for the blue line to the south side of the city on Hellman, Fremont, and then also the east, northeast side of the city that goes further into the neighborhood instead of just staying on the, on the CBD area. So thank you for the great work that you guys did on this. Couple questions. Here in the public comment, have we looked at any alternative frequencies for the bus? I know that we have been, it has been 20 minutes. Have we looked at different, different frequencies and how that impacts ridership?
Yes, we looked at the frequency. So frequency depends on the travel time on, of the sec, the running time of the segment and the number of buses that we have. So with the fixed number of buses of the route, we, unless, if we want to shorten the frequency, like let's say we want to make it every 10 minutes, then we need to shorten the running time by half. And in our, in our study, we evaluate the whole service area as a whole and also in, and also look into the neighboring agencies like Metro, Montebello Bus Lines, and also Monterey Park Shuttles. And we see that like the, maintaining the current running time is the best option and to, and trying to maintain every 20 minute. I, I know that it's, if we want to make it every 10 minutes, we have to sacrifice the running time. And in this scenario, we do not want to sacrifice the service area, so we rather just keep it as-is at every 20 minute. Of course, like it, it really still depend on the actual running time of the new service, and hopefully we can maintain that.
Understand, understand there's a lot of different factors we're trying to balance, and I also understand this is a pilot one-year program, and we'll continue to receive feedback on how it's on how it's working out for the community, and hopefully there, maybe there's opportunities for us to maybe make some changes later. So thank you for that. And then the other question I have is, have we looked at schedule coordinations with, you know, I'm looking at all these different bus routes with like Montebello Bus Routes, Metro, and there's a lot of existing lines here. Have we looked at schedule coordination so that riders' wait time at the transfer points can be minimized? Is that something that we can look into?
Uh, we can look into it as part of the, the, the service coordination, but I would just say like, for, for example, for Garfield Avenue with Montebello, because it's an hourly service, then we definitely will look into the, the, their schedule and see if some of their trips at our, every, let's say, assume every 20-minute increment could match with their every 60-minute so that they can make the, the connections. And for Monterey Park, because of, for Blue Line, we are going to pass by the Atlantic Avenue and Garfield Avenue. So Atlantic Avenue has Atlantic Times Square, which is a pretty popular destination for people, including myself. And also Monterey Park, they are undergoing a service change starting in August. They are going to have some route changes around that area. And I will also look into their service timetables and see if our timetables could match with theirs and then to make a subregional connectivity.
You're, you're reading my mind on that one. So I, I appreciate that. Exactly. I think, you know, we're a region, and it's really a big community, and sometimes people live in one city and working another, or they live in one, their mom lives in another. So it's really important that we coordinate with our neighboring cities and providing a more smooth transit experience for, for people. So certainly appreciate that. And once again, really appreciate the expanding the services to the south part of town, that, especially the part that's south of Town Freeway, that we didn't have any transit services for a very long time, and there's an aging population there. So some of the situations that we heard from our commenter, I think that's happening to a lot of the neighbors there. So they will certainly appreciate seeing bus lines going there. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you for the presentation and the, the maps and the changes that you are proposing. I'd like to kind of have a few questions, and I'll share something of my own experience, you know, make some suggestions. I think maybe a couple of years ago, we had a ridership study. I believe that, I might be wrong, are most of riders tend to be students of certain age? Is that correct? So we're sort of really serving, the ACT bus are really serving high school students?
Um, I, I can speak for the current survey, and the answer is yes. We, we, when, when Kimberly Horn did their study, they actually had surveyed quite a lot of student riders. And we, we, we did capture a handful, not handful, a, a group of people who, who are, who are students. And we also captured a group of riders who are actually from 30 to 50, who are workers, use the bus to commute, and then the rest are elderly group to use our recreation. But we do see probably in the majority group, half of them are students and half of them are commuters.
So about 50% are students and about half are workers?
Uh, yes.
And they live in the city?
Um, we, the survey didn't delve into like the zip code, so we, 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 we don't know the answer.
Oh, okay.
For the riders, yeah, origin.
So I think that this data is important for me to make sure that whatever changes that you propose are really targeting the groups that really need it the most on a daily basis. And then there's me, who is a driver. I kind of found out what happened, why is it a driver like me still cannot get on an ACT bus? Last week, I did not have a car. My car was in the shop, so I didn't have a car. It felt pretty strange. So I decided to walk from my house and got on Main Street, and I said, well, why don't I just walk, take the ACT bus for, I have a schedule in my wallet, actually, because that's how determined I was to try at least once, make sure I set a good example. And so I, I realized that there's no stop at Granada, and I'm glad that you're going to have a Granada stop on Main, is that correct?
That's the plan, yes.
Correct, because multiple people have talked to me about it, and I certainly felt it. So I thought, well, okay, then I'm going to take the ACT bus to downtown Alhambra and just have some lunch. Then I realized with a 20-minute waiting time, I might as well just walk over there. So there goes my, the ACT bus plan. So, you know, I'm not trying to make light of the whole thing, it just basically was my own personal experience. I realized that recreational rider like me, who needed one single while, will have a problem getting on the ACT bus because I was just going to go to downtown Alhambra for where I live, just have lunch and purchase something. And then I thought, well, if I want to go to Target and buy something, I am going to wait till my car is ready. So there, there's that mentality in me. So I'm thinking that hopefully that we can look into in the future, hopefully near future, to capture people like me who are very stubborn, who wants my comfort, also wants to go shopping, and I cannot think of myself carrying two bags of grocery and get home on the ACT bus. So I think years ago, we had the express buses that took the employees from the Alhambra on the west side to downtown Alhambra to eat. And I'm not sure how long that lasted. I remembered it and did not, it's the express stop, stop, bus stopped for some reason. I don't know if any of you remember that, but I do remember it take, take place. So I think that concept needs to come back, at least for a pilot program purpose, because I think there's room for that, for people like me who want to save gasoline, also want to cut down emission, of course, to give that a try again. So express bus that would take residents from different areas of the city and go directly to shopping areas, Valley, west side where Costco is and Target, also to the parks. That would be cut down on the waiting time. I think that's much, much more meaningful in terms of serving the entire Alhambra instead of just the students and the workers, because there's still, the rest of us were recreational riders. So I just want to share my thoughts with you. Hopefully that you'll consider that. Just want to clarify, so the proposed changes, which I, my current, I'm very excited, you're going to add a ACT bus stop on Granada Avenue and Main?
That's the plan, yes. And that's the route that we, we are proposing, and the actual bus stop placement needs to be determined by the road condition and whether there's any traffic intervention. But that would be, it's on my notes. I, I will, I will look into, to add the bus stop on Granada, but that's the plan.
Okay. And Alhambra Road, where is, where exactly is Alhambra Road? Through Alhambra Road or is it Alhambra and Granada?
You mean the exact bus stop placement? So in this study, we haven't gone into the, the nitty detail right now. So after this item is approved, then the next step will be having the bus stop assessment to, to the new route. And we will, and then we will do the test runs for, and develop the timetables.
So if I understood correctly, you, you still want to be further studies to, to figure out where, where on Alhambra Road you, you will add more bus stops?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, that's good. That's being very cautious and being very effective. And how long would the, uh, study will be done? The further study, how long will it last?
Um, it will take up around two months to assess the bus stops and work with the contractor to develop the timetables. Yeah.
So in terms of timeline, when will the changes be implemented in terms of additional bus stops?
Um, it will be as part of the whole service implementation go-live, which is the end of the year.
So we're looking at the end of the year?
Correct. So yeah, the, um, yes, the, the bus stop, the, the whole service will be implemented at the end of the year, and we are targeting after CSU finishes their finals.
End of 2020, which is, which is almost here.
Yes.
We're already in June. Okay. I don't think I have any more questions. I'm just very excited about the changes we're going to be making to serve our community and the people that need it to ride the buses the most. Okay. If there are no other comments or questions at this time, I need a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Maloney.
Yes.
Andrade Stadler.
Yes.
Maza.
Yes.
Wang.
Yes.
Lee. Yes. The next item on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda, item numbers five through 37. We have, oh, no, we don't. Do we have speaker cards for these items?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, we have cards for items number six, 22, 26, and 29.
Six, 22.
Uh, 26 and 29.
26 and 28, and does anyone from the council want to pull any items for discussion?
Um, just six, which I think we're going to discuss in 15.
Okay.
We also have a card now for item number 17.
And number 17. Seven and 17? Okay.
Item 17.
Just seven.
Okay, so right now I have item number six, 22, 26, 28, 17 polled for discussion.
Mayor, can I pull 15?
15?
Did that.
And 15.
We don't have a card for item number 15. Oh, sorry, my bad.
Okay, I'm going to pull 27 and 29 for clarification.
Can we just review which ones we're pulling?
Yes, I will go, go ahead and repeat the numbers. Number six, 15, 17, 22, 26, 27, 28, and 29 will be polled for discussion and separate voting.
I'll move approval for the remainder of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Maza.
Yes.
Wang.
Yes.
Andrade Stadler.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes. Okay, let me go ahead and get the speaker cards for item number six. Number six, Mr. Daniel Cruz, Kraus, Kraus.
Daniel Kraus, it's a pleasure to be here. I just wanted to bring up this item six about parking enforcement on the Margarita Street, Margarita, between Alhambra and Main, about the signs posted. There is street sweeping, which is very visible. I can see that, and I acknowledge that. But when it comes to residential parking with permits, there's nothing out there. All you see is a ticket on the window, and I'm not understanding why. There's no signs out there. There's a sign on, I did do a walkthrough, and I got proof, I got video of it, and I've got everything on my phone. I walked from Main on Margarita, I walked from Main all the way to Alhambra Road, and I did not see any signs. And I did see like two of them, but one of them was not, one was only visible, and it was on the opposite side of the street from where I got the ticket. I think there needs to be more visibility of those signs out there. It's not fair. It really isn't fair. I understand that I'm not supposed to park in a fire lane, that's common sense. Red zones are common sense. There's a lot of common sense places that I acknowledge I'm not supposed to park, but when it came to this, it was not a nice thing that I had received this. And it wasn't just me, I'm speaking up for other people that were getting the same thing. And they only targeted on the 400 block of Margarita Street, not, uh, Larch Street, 1400 West Larch Street. I believe that's one of the signs were there. And 300 North Margarita is another one. But they don't have enough signs out or residential, you got to have a permitted parking permit. So that's why I'm standing here today, throwing that on the table. It's not fair. That's all.
Mr. Kraus, did you approach the, so did you approach the police department, whoever writes, are, do we have a contract for writing citations, are correct, Mrs. City Manager?
I just.
Yes, we do.
I just don't feel, I think it's a scam. I mean, I really feel it's a scam. Why are they only targeting the northern part of Margarita Street and not the southern part of Margarita Street?
So, Ms. City Manager, is there a way for this person to?
There's not enough signs on the northern part.
I'm trying to see if you could follow up with someone.
Sure, we'd be happy to talk to him.
Could you?
So I heard, talk to me, but where was this, where was this?
I'm trying to find a way for you to address your concern, so after the meeting, someone will, will go to.
Without having to pay this hefty fine.
I don't know, but I, I'm, yeah, I don't know, but I'm trying to find a way for you to talk to someone, but.
I had a rental car here from the Enterprise that I parked there. I just came back from my area. I live in the Los Angeles Echo Park area, and I have that out there.
I would say that, please, after the meeting's over, please approach the city manager, she'll direct you to, to the proper person to talk to.
Booth to pay?
I, I'm not saying, just for you to follow, I'm just trying to follow up with your concern. Thank you.
Okay.
The next person, next speaker for item number 17 is Mr. I think Albert.
Thank you.
Thank you. How do you say your last name?
Modashami. And my wife is probably going to, just like, not nice to me, because I told her I wasn't going to talk, but hey, here we are. Thank you all so much, first of all, for taking the time to hear from everyone. It's amazing. And I also have experience as a public servant, so I know how much work goes into every single one of these items, like, I get it. And I think this one just kind of stood out to me for the land use for it. I'm definitely a person who likes to walk and walk around when I drive somewhere or bike somewhere. I like to bike, and I just think that three drive-throughs in this space, which I, I know what the space, next to a Costco, next to Target, but three more drive-throughs, I just wonder, and I implore the council and city staff to perhaps do some further research into seeing if there could be better ways to incorporate walkability, even making it more bike-friendly. For, I'll give you an example, I like to bike over to my cell phone repair guy, and I have to pass through a drive-through. And every time I pass through that drive-through, I'm like, oh, sorry, or like, someone's like, oh, sorry to me, because they didn't see me and things like that. So just making it a little bit more bike-friendly, walk-friendly, definitely for shopping, and definitely for restaurants, and definitely for areas where it can be possible to walk and, and, you know, commune and, and, you know, Mayor Lee, I think it's awesome that you got out of your car, even if it was not by choice, but, you know, having more of those types of opportunities, I think, for everybody. And then shoot with this new ACT re, reenactment, maybe it makes even more sense to take the bus over to Palm Street and enjoy these restaurants without having to drive or, you know, even if we keep the driving there, than having it in a more communal way or communal place that, that maybe even enables other things like, you know, concerts or what have you. I just, this is a land use thing for me. I'm totally for development, totally for other ways to even increase this by, say, you know, adding more affordable housing. I'm not trying to scare anybody, but I think just looking at this, I'm looking at the land use, and I think this is an amazing opportunity for us to maybe take it back and be like, hey, those three restaurants, keep them, but also too, how can we maximize the space and not just have them in drive-through format? So that's just something I implore the council, like I said, so much respect for everything that you guys do, even having this space, and I hope my wife is not watching on Zoom. And I hope my wife is not watching on Zoom, but if she is, then I hope I did okay. But, yeah, I think just the land use thing is such a huge thing for me, and I want to walk, I want to take the bus. I would, like, I'm so happy they're going to increase the Garfields from like an hour to twenty minutes. Because I love taking the bus, and I love walking, and I love biking, and I want to do it in Alhambra because this place is awesome. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Lewis McKimmon on item number twenty-two.
Thank you again, Lou McKimmon, one oh five North Cordova Street. The issue here before you is just scheduling this item for a hearing before the end of July. And what it is, is a situation where at eight oh four South Sixth Street, there was apparently a problem with weeds and vegetation being overgrown. And the the city was, had a complaint on that, and then code enforcement went out and determined, yes, this was a valid complaint. And for some reason, I don't know all the details, I don't know if this is rental property or owner-occupied property, whether it was a question of the person being elderly and not being able to do it or something, or whether they were just ignoring the city's request for them to get this cleaned up. Because at this time of the year that they were referring to, and I realize we'll get into all the details later when there is a public hearing on it. As I recall, it was late summer, I believe around August, and if you got a lot of dry weeds around there, it is a fire hazard for the area. But I just, I was a little surprised to see the amount being charged on this, thirty thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and forty-five cents. So I checked with, on a website called vmsthree.lafd.org, which is the Los Angeles City Fire Department, because they handle all the brush clearance issues and inspections over in the city. And their regulations are, if you go on that site, you'll find out, they do inspect almost all the parcels, and they say there's some I'm sure they don't bother to do downtown or anything. But if you pass on the first inspection, there is no fee. If you fail the first inspection or something, they want corrected, they post the pictures on their website and everything, they'll send you a notice. And the fee is thirty-one dollars for the second inspection. If you fail the second inspection, the fee jumps rather dramatically at seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Plus, if you fail the second inspection, then there's an additional contractor administration fee of one thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars, plus the contractor's lowest bid price. But all that together, and I'd tell you, well, I don't know how much it costs. I looked at it just on Google Maps. It's just an ordinary house, there's a lawn there, the picture was older than, it wasn't at the time that they were looking at it. And there's some bushes on the side. But I don't know how much it would have cost for the contractor to handle that, or I know when I was a kid at one, at ten twenty-one South Cordova Street, and I was in the tenth and eleventh grade, we'd complained that our twenty-five cent a week allowance was too little. And so Dad wrote up a list, and we got paid by the project. And if you mow both the front lawn and the back lawn, which were fairly considerable with the old hand-powered lawnmower, with no gas-powered lawnmower, and it didn't have a catcher on it, so you had to rake the grass off after. You did front lawn and back lawn, you got a nickel. Well, I realize times have changed since then, and I could see it being, you know, anywhere, depending on the size of the job, the crew involved, transferring away, might be anywhere from a low of a hundred dollars up to, you know, maybe even fifteen hundred at the outside. But I, it seems to me that the amount total there is a little bit high on the over thirty thousand dollar side compared to what other cities are charging and everything. I just like, when the hearing comes up, I'd like a lot more information about what was going on with the situation, some pictures and so forth. I don't know the persons involved, I don't know the situation involved. Yes, it's a situation that has to be taken care of, but it's just, I wanted to give you some of the comparative amounts from how it's handled in other cities. Thank you.
Mr. McKimmon, you could stay there for item number twenty-nine. Because you're the last speaker.
Yeah. Do you have a question, or no?
I have your card for item number twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine is real simple.
Okay.
Okay. It's just, we've discussed the changes to the ACT transit routes and stuff tonight, those are going to be implemented. My understanding, there's no change in the cost or anything on that, that'll probably be reflected in this adoption of the contract before you're here tonight. If there are any other changes, I'm sure those can be done as, you know, as a change order later. But I think most of my questions on that had been answered about the implementation time and so forth. And so if there's any changes needed later, those are easily dealt with. Thank you.
Do we have any speakers via Zoom that wish to speak on any of the consent agenda items?
There's one raised hand from Professor Michelson. I'm not sure if it's for the consent agenda, but we can check.
Hello, yes, it is. It's for item number six, about parking enforcement services. I'm just scratching my head on how that will exactly work and how it will be, and if it will ever be effective. If we continue to have, and it seems like we will, ICE raids, and we have these vigilantes coming through completely masked with no identification on their vehicles. You know, how exactly, and then, and they, I've seen them not necessarily in person, but I've seen them all over the internet on videos and news, driving up, parking illegally, blocking the driveway, pulling up like they're, well, pretty much like the police does. I mean, since when does the actual police department park properly? I mean, very rarely, honestly. They kind of just park wherever they want and then do what they're doing. But at least those are police officers. I'm talking about these supposed alleged ICE agents doing whatever they're doing, wreaking havoc and terrorizing Angelenos all over, including in Alhambra. And so what I'd like to know is, if this city is not going to mandate or enforce that cars have their licenses showing, what is the point of this item where you're going, where this, where the police department is going to use license plate recognition? That's all, and I'd like for you to address this, please. This is a grave concern. And myself and others on the, online are waiting with bated breath to hear how you, Alhambra City Council people, are actually going to deal with some, something like this. Whether it's now with this item, bring it up, ask questions while the police department is here, or in a special meeting. But I'd like to hear how you're going to deal with this. Thank you very much.
Looks like we have one other raised hand from Yvonne.
Hi, yes, I am also, I'm also attending this meeting because of what the previous attendee just said right now. I noticed that on the Nextdoor app, there is a lot of concerns regarding the ICE raids. A lot of the ICE raids just going into businesses, into Target, Costco. And they are not, you know, they are violating the Fourth Amendment, the Fifth Amendment. A lot of the residents who live in Alhambra, South Pasadena and the neighboring cities are afraid to go out, and they're just the way they're terrorizing the residents here, they're not following rules, and they're just kidnapping people because they're not even identifying themselves as as police or anything. So it's pretty much like they're kidnapping, and they are not, they don't even have a warrant for a lot of their arrests, they're racial profiling. And I want to know how you guys are going to make the city safe for us to, to walk around the streets. Thank you.
The next raised hand is from Edward Escarsega.
There we go. Hi, thank you. I'm, I live in District Five, and I think I don't need to give my address. If you need to find me, just ask Adele or Jeff. But thank you for the good work you all do. I, I'm here to ask the city to direct our police department. I'm just going to be straightforward about this. Okay, so I'm going to be straightforward about this because I just want the city to stand up and publicly commit to protecting residents from unlawful immigration enforcement activity. My sons attend grade school in the heart of East LA, and they've told me about classmates that come to school in tears. Families are too afraid to attend the award ceremonies or speak to staff. They were, they're worried it might be a trap, you know? So my younger sons points out that every unmarked car with tinted windows or no plates, you know, you ask me if that's ICE. Wondering if they're going to, they've been at his school, more police have been at his school. It's a frightening scene. I just don't know if everyone is aware of the gravity. I'm sure you all are. This invoked the, you know, Enemy Aliens Act. We have masked gunmen pointing at our citizens, at our families, in Pasadena, in the safest of places. I really need someone to please stand up and make a special meeting to talk about this now. This, it needs to happen. This is not nineteen forty-two all over again. Some of us have already gone through this in our families, you know, a generation or two ago. So we don't want to have this happen again. We want due process. We're seeing impersonation, no IDs, no badges, face coverings, rental cars. It's, we're going to get caught in the crossfire. About four percent are legal. Four percent, that's, this is a mistake, sorry, collateral. So we gotta say something, people. This is, whether you're Republican, right wing, left wing, the way they're doing it and the way this is happening is unconstitutional. We need to live by the law. Please, Alhambra, you guys have the power to say something. Stand up for the Constitution. Thank you. Thanks for the good work you do. And by the way, for the patience, restraint, civility, and deep respect for the First Amendment, especially tonight, I appreciate you all.
I have a speaker that just came by. I thought you left the room. Ken Bondi, do you want to speak on the following two items, twenty-six and twenty-nine?
Twenty-six. Voting for emergency expenditures, tree removal, debris removal. And the hell with tree replacement, because when China drops its nuclear bombs on America, you won't need a goddamn tree. Need a goddamn country back. So regarding these frickin' emergency expenditures, it's kind of ridiculous. We should have a cycle, a routine, where government, local government follows, kind of like the jargon of conversation you heard right now by several speakers about ICE and all this, you know? Who fucking cares? What we're worried about is what we're trying to do here in local government, which is suppress the overspending in cost and abuse and waste of taxpayers' money. This way, we don't have to worry about a budget. We know that the budget's going to have an overflow and create more jobs, create more services under program activities that, again, are not granted to elderly or disabled people because they're the targeted group that are constantly being racially discriminated by, local government. That's why we're going to have a talk about these buses for seniors, right? It's another issue that I brought up. But the main cause of waste and fraud is because local government doesn't oversee what our our poor manager over here is doing. The city manager runs this game here in Alhambra. Not you guys, you just are tokens, as I call you, puppets. And, and you like the fame and you like the notoriety of this glorious position, but it's worthless. It's pitiful, shitful thinking. Because Native Americans never praised themselves as what their accomplishments were. See, Native Americans were saving the trees in the Everglades, which they used to destroy the American thirteen colony, colonies of the United States Army. Because the Seminoles escaped the United States Army because they were smart. They knew the land, they knew the trees, they knew the shrubs, they knew the debris, and they knew how to escape from white niggers too. And I'm a white nigger too. Look at me, dark, handsome, well-mannered, very vulgar, and very venomous, just like the serpents I find in the, in the Florida swamps. But I come to California and I find out that California sucks. Less trees, more cement. More high-rise, less, less trees, less shade. Just concrete jungle. Because we want to satisfy the status quo of building more density, fucking up our neighborhoods. The American dream was to have neighborhoods, not apartments, not, not four hundred, three hundred units apartments, like Hilda Solis and that dumb, dumb barfer up there in Pasadena think about. That's all they think about is density. If they really cared about the American people, they would bring back the Native American plants that you guys cut down. All the oaks, Indian oaks, like me, an Indian oak. Hard to destroy, but we're fading away. Because, as I mentioned earlier in my public comment, that we're living in hell. And that hell is, is, is really a vote of decisions made by you elected officials, right, Maza? Right, Maloney? Right, Miss Adele? And without you, Miss Wang and your children, no future. I love it. I pray to the God of the almighty Native Americans who saved your asses in World War II to bring judgment. And judgment's here, thanks to Trump, thanks to all of you who pushed them to the level of, yeah, push the button, let's just get it over with. So, closing to these, what, thirty-three items on this agenda, it's ridiculous. Thirty-six items, and only very few of the public in Alhambra come in here to, to, to question this thing, whether it's thirty seconds or two minutes. It's sad to say, God bless America, thank you, Trump, keep bringing in the ICE, because I love ICE. Matter of fact, I love ICE, ICE, baby.
Does the council have any questions or comment, any of the items that are polled?
Madam Mayor, I think that there's, there's a few more raised hands on Zoom. I can maybe check to see if they're sure. Or a consent agenda item? Yeah, we're still on the consent agenda right now. It'll be after this item. We're still on the consent agenda. So the public comment for non-agendised will come in a moment. Okay, so for the person that is phone number six two six eight two four zero seven oh nine, did you want to speak on a consent agenda item?
I wanted to address the things that Melissa talked about in terms of I wanted to address the things that Melissa talked about in terms of protecting our...
Okay, that's...
So I don't know if this is the time. I was having trouble getting on to the...
Okay, we will, we will take your comments in just a moment under the public comment for non-agendized items. We'll call you in just a moment, thank you. And then the only other raised hand is from Yvonne, but I believe that she already spoke on the consent agenda.
Just before we approve this agenda or the rest of the consent, I just want to, you know, I think he's gone, but I just want to let the audience know and those that are online that the emergency expenditures for the tree removal is dollars that are given to us from FEMA. FEMA gave money to Pasadena and all the other areas that that were affected by the fires. And we're in that circle. And the phone calls that I received during that fire time were that trees had blown over in several locations. I don't know if you all know that, but that's basically why we are spending the FEMA money, which is appropriate, totally appropriate for us to do that, to 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 remove the trees that are no longer safe standing. I know, I had one in front of my house, and it was close to my husband's hood of his car, and I said, you got it, we got to take it out. And it was very sad because it was a tree that was starting to grow and be a little bit healthy, and we were taking care of it, but it was thinner, it was just small enough that, you know, the winds blew it over. So not just my tree, but many trees on west end of Main, they were blown down and and very frightening looking in the medians, and I saw, I could probably count them, there were quite a few. So I just, you know, I wanted to let that guy know that, that this is totally appropriate for us to spend the FEMA money on this. I do agree that I'd like to see more trees planted where we're losing them, but, you know, that remains to be seen. And then on the parking enforcement services, you know, I actually do have a question for the chief regarding your, because this is your recommendation to use the intercom. I know that the the police department has their license readers and that it's been effective, just because we get briefings every week on what happens in the police department, but I know that it's been effective in in catching people who are stealing cars, and it's been successful just by that alone. But I'm wondering how intercom will do the exact same thing that the law enforcement would be doing. And then in addition to that, you're not looking for undocumented people as you are looking, as you look at the the drivers, I mean, the license plate, is that correct? So if you pull somebody over and you know it's a stolen car, the first question you don't ask is whether they're documented or not, but rather that they stole a car and they're going to be arrested for that. Is that right?
It is against California law for us to ask for immigration stuff.
Thank you very much.
And license plate readers for the parking vehicles is completely different than other license plate readers that we use. These will be used to basically drive up and down the streets to see if people have the virtual permits for the overnight parking. It also records the time that vehicle kind of parked at a spot, like during the 24-minute spots or the four-hour parking spots, so that it kind of, it basically makes our parking enforcement a lot more efficient.
So, yeah, that's what I was going to say. So it's more efficient for our, the intercom to be able to do, utilize this and not rely so much on the computer stuff, but as it comes in, but rather immediately and be able to to save that data so that it's more effective. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you so much. I, I think that might have been the only two that I really wanted to address, other than, I think there's some, I'll address it at the end of public, for public comment regarding our undocumented families, and I think that's it for me.
Just comments on a couple of the items. One, first one is the parking citation contract amendment. I think this is fine, I think it's great. This is, it will make us more efficient. I just have two sort of things that that stick with me sometimes, and I've talked to our city manager about this previously, but I noticed that in the downtown area, there are cars that will just park in red zones. Allegedly, some of them are doing DoorDash or Uber Eats or something like that, but, you know, the red zones for a reason, and it seems like we should be enforcing them. I don't know if that's something we can incorporate into intercom's route, but it seems like something that's worthwhile to catch, you know? I know specifically, I remember I was at, I spent an hour and a half or so at 38 degrees there on the corner, and I was just, I was really annoyed that someone parked this big truck in the red zone, stayed there for the entire time I was there. Finally, someone came out and left, but it's a, first right there is fairly narrow, so cars are coming down and trying to pass each other, and it just pinches down, and I think it's a safety thing, frankly, and I'd love to see more enforcement there. The other one, some of the the baseball parents may not like me for saying this, but especially at Almanza Park, when it gets really busy in that lower lot down there, where everyone scrambles to get down in there and waits around, people are constantly parked in the in the accessible spots, in the ADA spots, and in the the loading areas in between the accessible spots. And it just makes it really difficult, you know, if someone actually did have a van there, a truck there with a lift, and they have to get out, and and it's full of parents who are who are running late and just parked there because it's easy. These aren't bad people, we're all strapped for time, but you can't park in ADA spots unless you have the placard. Don't tell me I said, just. I did want to talk, address the the parcel consolidation for the drive-through restaurants on, it's Palm, right? I think when that came before us previously, they presented some designs, I think we did have some feedback, and some of them were, refresh my memory, some of them were going to be all only drive-through, but and they didn't have, they didn't account for pedestrian walkthroughs and and some bike areas. And I think what they did come back with is bike racks and outdoor dining and on a walking path through the property, is that correct? So I don't love it either. I do think that, you know, we, we want to be encouraging to businesses come in. I would love to cultivate, you know, a marketplace in Alhambra where where people do get out of the cars and walk around and feel comfortable riding their bikes and walking to places instead of always driving. I, you know, and I think we're moving in that direction. I think in that particular area, you know, a lot of cars coming out of the parking lots of Target and Costco, and I think there is, there is some nexus there. It does sort of make sense for people to just pop across the street. What is it, is it another Raising Canes there and something else? It's not my ideal land use, but I do think it sort of makes sense in that spot, and I am paying more attention, I think we all are, to these issues when they come up, and we're, we're being, I think, a lot more thoughtful about approving these types of things. So, you know, I'd like to see this one go through, I'll support it, and then I do want to make sure that we're really thinking about these land use decisions down the road in the future, because I agree with the concern. With the, oh, I want to, I'll do that one last, the weed abatement, is it, my understanding is that, we did have comments about that it's expensive, it is expensive, and if you look at the cost schedule, no offense to the attorneys in the room, that's where it really bumped up in in costs, is when you have to get attorneys involved in essentially mowing your yard and and clearing brush. It's too bad it got to that point, but after multiple rounds of ignoring the warnings and the citation, when it would have been low cost, then the attorneys have to get involved, and it does bump the cost up. I think it was, it's almost two-thirds of the cost of the whole thing, or or close there, too. So it's unfortunate, that won't be, I mean, I think the way this works, if a lien is recorded, it'll just stay there until the property's sold, and then we'll be able to recover those costs, is that right? So we're not necessarily asking for somebody to pay now, it is a lot of money, but hopefully when the property sells at some point in the future, there'll be plenty to cover that, and everyone will be made whole. And then the last one, I'm hoping someone could, Jessica, maybe somebody can explain in real simple terms what item 15, the Caltrans contract amendment, is actually doing. My understanding is that we're not moving forward with any particular project, we're just continuing the review that we're...
That's correct. So approximately two years ago, the council saw and approved a PID, so a project initiation document to be sent to Caltrans. We sent it to Caltrans along with $210,000 for them to charge their time to, and in order for them to review the document. We have regular meetings with Caltrans, and at the most recent meeting, staff was told that Caltrans staff has been drawing down incrementally, so, you know, charging their fees hourly to our original $210,000, and money is now at zero. So it's estimated by Caltrans that they will need $70,000 additionally in order to complete the review of our PID document. Once the PID document is approved, we will be able to move into the EIR process and with that, the additional studies that we promised to the community now more than two years ago and the council, and and those environmental studies will, will look at the alternatives and look at the noise impacts, the congestion, the air quality, and monitor whether, or which alternatives are most effective and and put forward the data behind them. So we're very eager to get to that point, but we're not there yet. It's still with Caltrans, which we expected to just be a two-month process two years ago, and here we are. So now we, we're going to say this again, we hope that we get through it by the end of July, and that we have a document that's signed and that we can move forward to the environmental studies.
Right. Thank you. That's, that's consistent with my understanding. It's, we're not making any substantive decisions here, we're not committing ourselves to a course of action. This just allows Caltrans to finish the review so we can get into that stage of the project where we can start digging in and figuring out which alternative we like or which no project alternative we like, just to allow us to make that decision so we can continue to move on with this larger project that has been many, many years in the making. So, thank you. I'm obviously supportive of that because I'm anxious to get that, that whole large project moving, not, not committing to any course of action, just allowing us the chance to get in and make some decisions there. I don't have comments in any of the other ones, so I'll stop there.
I have a couple of comments, just wanting to address some of the public comments I heard. First one is item 17. I'm just really happy to hear the public comment regarding walkability in the city. I think, I appreciate Vice Mayor Maloney's thoughts on this, and I think that it is our goal to promote walkability, but I do want to explain a little bit of the process. I think tonight, this, what's on the agenda is approval of the final parcel map, and this is a process, and staff, please confirm my understanding, that approval of parcel map starts with a tentative map Seminoles. So that already was, was approved in July 2024 with conditions. So now all the conditions have been met, then we're approving the parcel map. So if you're not seeing any action taken tonight, that's because this is, we already started the process. But with that said, I think we're being very intentional about allowing drive-throughs in the city and being intentional about promoting walkability, because it is our goal to have a better pedestrian experience in the city and encourage people to get off their cars and walk more and bike around and do all of that. So just very encouraging to to hear people pay attention to the things on the agenda and speaking up about their concerns. And then item 15. I appreciate Vice Mayor Maloney for bringing this up, and I want to thank city manager for your explanation on this. I know the 7-10 process has been taking longer than any of us have hoped, and many of the delays have been outside of the city's direct control, including state-level reviews and coordination with Caltrans. And even during these delays, staff is working tirelessly behind the scenes in trying to expedite the process. So the agenda item tonight to provide additional funding for Caltrans review is actually an important part of moving this forward. We are not going, we're not going any particular direction yet, we're just trying to finish this process with coordination with Caltrans, allowing them to finish their reviews so that we can reach for the next milestone. And this, the fact that this item is on the agenda is, it's being transparent, we're being very transparent about spending money on this project, and when we reach the next milestone, we will continue to do public outreach, we'll continue to go out there and have public meetings and reach out to our community and share the progress in the project. So I just want to get that clarification out there. So thank you for that. That's all my comments.
I need a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mazza.
Yes.
Wang.
Yes.
Andratty Stadler.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes. Next, we have the continuation of public comment for non-agendized items. Do we have any speakers that were not able to speak at the beginning of the meeting? Please note, we kindly request that our speakers state their name and address for the record before making their comments. I have speaker cards here ready for non-agendized items. The first one is Vincent Basobas.
I believe he might have left.
He probably left, okay. Next one is Melissa Ibulimichaelson. She's not here. David Bono? Not here.
Thank you, Lou McCammon, again, 105 North Cordova Street. First off, just want to start by recognizing the good work of the Public Works Department and your contractor on the street rehab going on in northeast part of the city there. They've already pretty well completed most of the project on the the curb rehabilitations, and then later will come the resurfacing of the streets, doing a good job picking up that, it looks like they're picking up that small spot I had mentioned to them on South Cordova Street that's very nearby also. Secondly, more importantly, the things I handed out to you, some of it relates to the events of this last weekend, some of it relates also to the issue of refugees and immigrants in in the area. I would have had other things for you, but my printer was pooping out today, so. But just on the other things here, this last week, Tuesday, June 17th, the L.A. County Board of Supervisors unanimously passed a motion to study the ICE raids' impact on small businesses. And they were citing data in that resolution. One of the pieces of data is that one in every five persons in L.A., families in L.A. County, one in every five either have, are either undocumented themselves or live with someone who is. One in five. This is a very significant portion of our communities. Right after Supervisor Hilda Solis spoke at the press conference that morning, speaking about this resolution, the next person to speak was former Alhambra United First Methodist Pastor Bridey, Pastor Bridey Roberts. I recognized her on the video on that. Also, nearly 3.5 million of the county's 10 million residents are immigrants. They were not born in the United States. In my household, my other half counts in that, too. She was born in Mexico. They collectively contribute $115 billion per year through taxes and estimated spending power. The immigrants, as of Friday, June 20th, was Annual World Refugee Day. I, one of the things I passed out there, which... One of the things I passed out there, which countries have been accepting the most refugees since the data began to be collected, just the United States is down kind of low, below a lot of other countries. The one at the top just got bombed this weekend, that was Iran. Most of their refugees were from Afghanistan. Immigrants as a percentage of the population, USA, 14.3%. That was an estimate for 2023. State of California, 27%. By far the largest of any state in the United States. City of Alhambra, 2020 census, 45.9%. San Gabriel, 52%. San Marino, 46.6%. Monterey Park, 51.6%. Rosemead, 58.6%. This is the majority of the population in many of our cities. These are significant people. My wife and I had many people that we worked with over the years as teachers, particularly at Belmont High School, where we had a huge immigrant population. Many of these were the best students we had. I remember when one of our students would come here, he came from the Philippines. He was an outstanding student. He'd been admitted to Harvard. His father had come here on a refugee status visa, and his father died. And so the FBI picked him up and was going to ship him out of the country because they said, "Your case was part of your father's case. He died, your case died with him." Well, we were all outraged, needless to say, and we contacted the senators and everybody else, and we got that reversed. But just when you're talking about how to treat people coming in, I've heard some reference to, let me give you something from Leviticus, the third chapter of the Old Testament, Book 19, verses 33 and 34. This is from the New International Version. "When a foreigner resides among you in your land, do not mistreat them. The foreigner residing among you must be treated as your native-born. Love them as yourself; for you were foreigners in Egypt. I am the Lord," end quote. That was what Moses had gotten from above. Well, I wish I had lots more time. I wound up preaching on that subject last Sunday when our regular preacher was out and they asked me to take over, and I was talking about immigration and stuff, so. I'll leave it at that, I'm a little over time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Shirley Tatsuno.
I'm supporting Antonio from the Institute of Public Strategies. You know, for many years, my apartment building has been a smoke-free building. I was anxious to get this designation after one of my tenants below was a smoker. Brian and I could smell smoke in our bathroom. And this brings such memories of me of my dad, who was a camel smoker, and holding my breath in the bathroom after he smoked because the smell was so bad. As a result, I never had a desire to smoke a cigarette. But, you know, I've had a problem in the past, is that my building shares a driveway with a duplex next door, and a very nice couple lives there. But sometimes they smoke weed, and the smell drifts to a couple of my apartments. And those tenants complained to me because I couldn't figure out what it was initially, but then I realized what it was. And I told them that a four-unit building, they don't have, they're not restricted from smoking per our ordinance, so my only solution was to close your doors, is all I could tell them. But I remember a Latino family who came to a city council meeting years ago complaining about smoking in their building. They had a child with asthma, and this was really affecting him. And I was going to suggest they move, but they likely had affordable rent, so they wouldn't want to move, and I felt real bad for them. And, you know, I didn't realize that Pasadena was a smoke-free city, but it's nice. You know, when I was there, I could really tell. And, but, I don't know how you're going to convince some of the smokers in Alhambra, and many of them are, are the Asian male smokers, I don't know how you convince them. I think some owners don't want to lose those renters, and I see those smokers also in front of restaurants, and they just disregard, you know, the sign. But I wish we could have a smoke-free city. But I wanted to make a few more comments for the active streets last night. Instead of going to San Gabriel, I walked to South Pass. That was nice, with all those trees and beautiful historic homes, and to see all those bicyclists and people just having so much fun that it made me think about our, our, our bike path. And I think we should still make that a priority and not wait for that grant money. It really made me, especially seeing little by little, more and more people, bikers, riding on our sidewalks. Although, I know one of the problems, which I thought from the very beginning, was that some residents are not going to like to have, you know, their ability to park in front of their homes on the street taken away. So I always thought that that was going to be the big problem. But, and I, just talking about that freeway, too, is I'm walking for Noya, I really could see how the people around that Fremont area were so concerned about freeway, so they really should target those people and engage them to, you know, when you have these discussions about that freeway. And I want to say that I went to Noya's, that Neighborhood Watch meeting, and the one thing I really loved is that CERT booklet. That thing is awesome. Because I was, because I was a part of CERT, but I kind of gave up on it, but it just, it just takes so much work, although I know it's important. But I like that booklet. It has a lot of really good information in that little booklet, rather than when I first joined CERT, they had that big booklet. That little booklet, I think, is a much better idea. Thank you. Oh, one thing I wanted to say, one of the things about this whole immigration thing, the cemeteries, Rose Hill, for Father's Day, I've been going for 20 years and I photograph, especially the Latino, because they're beautiful, and they make the cemetery beautiful. But Friday before, they were hardly, it didn't, it didn't look normal. There were hardly any decorations, very few flowers. So on Friday I went, I'm going to go real fast, on Fri-, not Fri-, on Father's Day I went, and I could see, because I photographed these people, their displays, Latinos, real small, or if they do the fence around the gravestones, they did it so quickly, they hardly put anything in it, all this blank space that they normally put, all the decorations, they are so afraid, it's so wrong. Thank you.
Do we have any speakers? We assume that we should speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have several raised hands. The first is Randy K.
Hi, thank you very much for all the hard work you do. I was wondering if you could reconsider rewriting the standards of decorum for this, these meetings to protect us from some of the language that was used this evening. I also wanted to thank Chief Harris, Chief Harris, I think I'm in San Gabriel, Chief Kennedy for the community policing model that is in Alhambra. Our police are absolutely fantastic, very receptive, friendly, helpful, and there are a million things I could say that are really great about them. And I also wanted to give a shout out to Public Works and Code Enforcement. Our street on Friday looked like the day it was paved after the street sweeper came through. The reason why I'd like to speak tonight, and I know this issue has been discussed before, is I'd like to ask you again to consider a ban on safe and sane fireworks. There are no safe and no sane fireworks, period. We've had fireworks going out off in the evening here over the last two weeks near Athan-Helman. It's very difficult for my dog, Tiger Lily. Every July 4th, we have to park in the parking lot behind Ross on Lake Avenue in Pasadena from before dark until 11:00 to 11:30 at night, and then try to get back to Alhambra. Last year, we came back at 10:30 and people were setting off fireworks in the streets. I was afraid they would set my car on fire. It sounded like a war zone. We heard fireworks until 1:30 in the morning. We have short memories about the Eaton and Palisades fire, fires. It only takes one ember falling into poorly maintained eaves troughs with dried-out leaves in them to set the entire city on fire. We are not in a very high-fire hazard zone, neither was part of Altadena. Are you really willing to risk everything you've worked for your entire life and watch it burn down to the ground? Very few people have sufficient insurance to make them whole again, because these days you can't even get it, even if you're able to pay for it. In Santa Clarita, I lived with an evacuation list at the end of my bed. I could pack the car to get out in 12 minutes. When I moved to Alhambra, I had a false sense of security that nothing like what happens up there could happen here, but I was wrong. It happened very close to us and could easily have traveled a little farther south than it did. I now sleep with that same evacuation list at the end of my bed. Have we learned nothing from what occurred in January? Is setting off fireworks one evening worth the risk of millions of dollars of damage to our city? Can we not be satisfied with the city hosting a fireworks event and inviting residents to come and enjoy it together? Can we not follow the lead of cities like South Pasadena and Pasadena who have banned fireworks entirely? Perhaps this July 4th, residents can prepare for the evening by creating an evacuation list and practice packing their car to see how long it takes. They might need to do that. We must put a stop to all fireworks to ensure the safety of residents and their property and keep Alhambra and surrounding cities safe. Please make all fireworks illegal and be willing to enforce that law. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is a phone number, 626-824-0709. If you could state your name for the record, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Beverly Marata, and I've been in Alhambra probably for almost 50 years, and I live Garfield, just south of Mission. And I want to, first of all, thank Mayor Lee and the rest of the council people for all that you do for Alhambra. One of the reasons that I like living here is because of the support that you give to the people. And I first learned about all the ICE kind of know-your-rights thing because of a wonderful workshop that Adele Stadler presented at the Alhambra Library, and it was outstanding. That was kind of my first initiation to learning about the know-your-rights and what to do. And since then, I've been an active member of the Little Tokyo Rapid Response. I'm also part of the Shutdown Adelanto group, and Adelanto is a detention center that's near Victorville. And I'm also part of All Saints in terms of their sacred resistance. I'm very, very concerned about the raids that have been happening in Alhambra, and that there's constant breaking of laws as the ICE, people do their raids, they're mass, they're unidentified, they're wearing plain clothes, they're in unmarked cars, and they're basically kidnapping people off the streets. And I really feel that Alhambra needs to do something to protect the people in Alhambra and to really ask the Alhambra Police to follow up in terms of verifying that they have a legitimate reason to be here and to stop these kinds of kidnappings. I know that in Huntington Park, the mayor basically has said, and I will read, "I am calling for the immediate cessation of these raids and for the Huntington Park Police Department to begin verifying the identities and authority of any individuals conducting such operations within city limits." And that they were, he was basically directing the police department to enforce laws concerning unmarked vehicles, visible license plate, and required agency identification. I know that the Alhambra Police are totally responsive and have helped me out many, many times. I fortunately live close to the police department, so when I've called, they've been at my place probably within three to five minutes. And I know that they are very conscientious about their jobs and do an excellent job. But right now, we need to protect the people in Alhambra. So I really would appreciate your consideration in terms of making an official policy to help protect the people in Alhambra. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
The next speaker is DB.
This is David Bond. I'm a longtime resident of Alhambra for 20 years now. I was there earlier in the meeting, but unfortunately, we only had 30 minutes in the beginning part of the meeting for public comment. So really, I'm, I'm here to speak on behalf of our community as a whole in Alhambra. Right now, we have an invasion of these masked armed men kidnapping our community members. We, I appreciate that the police aren't collaborating with them, but they're still, the federal agents supposedly are operating against constitutional law and against the good of Alhambra here in our city. Our law enforcement agencies should impose reasonable restrictions on these operations. All federal agents must register their law enforcement credentials, so similar to what the previous speaker said, mentioned what, what the city of Huntington Park's doing, making sure that federal agents identify themselves as actual law enforcement and not just masked vigilantes. We should have their ID badge and face exposed while they're in our city doing operations, and we should also register, register the warrant signed by a judge to ensure that we understand the scope of their operations in our community. These invading kidnappers are harming our community by imposing terror on our working families. Schools, businesses, churches are all being impacted by these actions of these unconstitutional invaders. They're acting as marauders, and they're violating not only constitutional law, but are also our system of due process. They've also been noted to kidnap US citizens with no just cause, holding and harming them for over 24 hours. It's very alarming. I understand that the, the federal administration says it's okay, but they're operating outside of the Constitution here in our city, and we should impose some reasonable restrictions. Just last week, the Vice President came to LA and claimed the reason that they've escalated things, specifically sending the military to Los Angeles, our neighboring big city, is because the extreme leftists are using violence against federal agents for the simple act of enforcing immigration law. But in reality, there's no major violence against federal agents, it's just protests and community trying to defend itself against these masked mercenaries. That same language that J.D. Vance used has been used by repressive regimes throughout the past 100 years, from Germany to South Africa to Imperial Russia, that same sort of messaging, "We're just doing simple act of enforcing immigration law." But in fact, it's creating terror here in our community. Our immigrant community builds our homes, make our meals, they grow our food, they teach our children, and often do the most difficult jobs across the whole country and city. The federal government being led by a convicted felon right now and staunchly supported by the most cruel and vile people in our society is purposefully harming our greater county of Los Angeles, including our city. They want to terrorize us, they want to harm our community fabric and hurt our businesses and growth. Please take these reasonable steps to impose restrictions on these violent masked assault weapon armed mercenaries. weapon armed mercenaries. To repeat what I'm asking for, what other cities are doing is to register any agent with their law enforcement ID operating in our city, enforce all agents are identifiable and unmasked operating in our city, and enforce and register warrants used by these agents for the individuals they're seeking out to ensure the agents aren't violating constitutional law. We need to act on this immediately. There is a huge influx of hundreds, thousands of agents in our state, hundreds in Los Angeles County, and they're acting with impunity. I don't expect our police to go and fight them. I think that's a little bit more than someone can reasonably ask, but to ask for restrictions to identify themselves as actual law enforcement agents and register with the city, to make sure they're identifiable and unmasked, and to make sure that they have warrants and they're seeking individuals on those warrants and they're not just trying to scoop up anyone who fits their, you know, whatever their racial profiling model is. Thank you.
The next speaker is Professor Michelson.
Hi there, it's Melissa. I wasn't able to change my Zoom name here, but yes, I was there earlier and now I'm here for a public comment. Two things, just one thing about fireworks. I actually love fireworks, but a ban on safe and sane fireworks would be good, even of course the illegal ones. I don't know why Councilwoman Stadler rescinded her interest from doing this a couple of months ago after a bunch of students and parents showed up here a few months ago saying fireworks was the only way they could somehow raise money for school activities. And then I remember Mayor Lee was the only person up there who just wanted to discuss the concept of what to do, what Alhambra should do with fireworks, even just banning them for the rest of the year, but then having it open during the time of 4th of July. That could have been a discussion point, but none of you wanted to talk about that. And we all know that people come from all over to buy the fireworks here in Alhambra and then they set them off all year. So I hope that one of these years, you guys will figure something out because, and not just cater to the parents and the students of the school claiming they can't fundraise for any other, with any other, by any other way. The second thing I want to talk about is that I'm asking for you to call a special meeting, to order the Alhambra Police Department to keep the community safe and enforce against masked men with weapons and unmarked vehicles from terrorizing Alhambra. We need to know where Alhambra stands and what side the police department is on. We also need to know what Alhambra ordinances these thugs are breaking or potentially breaking and how many people have been disappeared by these anonymous vigilantes. But most of all, we need to know that you have our backs. This isn't about illegal immigrants and this isn't about immigrants at all per se. It's about treating our members of the community with dignity. It's about people knowing who is detaining them. And I just want to echo what other people have said, having proper badging and also licenses and having the warrants. Does this mean that I can mask myself, get a badge off of eBay and walk around with a gun threatening people and sticking them in cars and driving off with them? I mean, and then if someone, I mean, doesn't someone have a right to protect themselves with a gun? Like someone said, people are going to get stuck in a crossfire. And this cannot wait until the new vigilante, anti-vigilante bill that California Senator Sasha Rene Perez has put out today. This absolutely cannot wait. Huntington Park has put out, the mayor of Huntington Park has, is asking their police department to enforce laws concerning unmarked vehicles, having visible license plates, and then urging enforcement to investigate and interfere, sorry, intervene in any unauthorized operations that take place and, you know, put civil liberties and public safety at risk. So I don't know why we can't do this and I know this would be an agenda item. I know you're not meeting until August, I believe. This needs to happen now and I'm asking for you to have a special meeting where you could hear from the Alhambra Police Department. And by the way, we're a sanctuary city, but it doesn't really matter. So is Pasadena and they've gotten all kinds of people taken away, all the immigrants, you know, that, I mean, it's a free for all and I don't have to repeat what others have said. But in any case, it doesn't matter that we're a quote unquote sanctuary city. Obviously, we want the police and the city council to come forward and actually do something and put out a message, not just reiterating sanctuary city, but it would be very helpful if the police department were ordered to protect us. Also, you know, maybe they could come and talk about the different violations in the municipal code. I called the city police department the other day and I asked about what code violations, you know, could potentially happen by these quote unquote ICE agents. They pretty much said, oh, just look in the code, just look in the code. So, I mean, it wasn't very helpful, but I did look in the code. There's something about power to arrest, but what they're doing may or may not be that. Also that peace officers are exempted from things, but they're not peace officers. They have private parking on private property could be. Before your next meeting to specifically talk about what you and the police department of Alhambra can do for Alhambra, dealing with these ICE raids, that would be most appreciated. Thank you.
The next speaker is Katie Chan.
Hi, my name is Katie Chan. I'm a lifelong resident of Alhambra and I currently serve as the president and commissioner of the Environmental Sustainability Commission for District Four. I'm also the proud daughter of immigrant parents and I stand in solidarity with the immigrant and working class communities that make up the backbone of this city. Despite recent reports of ICE conducting mass militarized operations across LA County, including detaining residents in unmarked vehicles without clearly identifying themselves, Alhambra has remained silent. There's nothing on this agenda to address these terrifying incidents or to ensure that our residents are protected from these kidnapping operations. While other cities like Huntington Park are taking bold steps to keep their community safe by directing their police departments to enforce laws against unmarked vehicles, lack of identification, and impersonation of law enforcement, I urge you all to convene a special meeting immediately to direct the Alhambra Police Department to: One, invest and verify the identities of anyone conducting operations within our city; Two, to enforce local and state ordinances concerning unmarked vehicles, concealed license plates, and the failure to provide agency identification; Three, and protect our residents from being unlawfully detained or terrorized. We deserve leadership for this community that will act to protect us. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jay Xiao.
Hello. I know I've had public comment earlier already, so I'll keep mine short. I'm urging the city to just, when it comes to enforcement activity, to involving ICE to just be fully transparent. Agents should be identified and unmasked at all times and take some concrete steps on what the city can do, just like, don't honor ICE detainees without judicial warrant, don't notify ICE about individuals' release dates unless legally required. I mean, masked agents and backdoor coordination with ICE generally creates fear and mistrust. We've really seen it in the SGB. I'm hoping that you can also meet with the police department and just commit to a clear public policy, codify something. Yeah, just want to support and echo the other folks.
The next speaker is Mingjia Chen.
Hi, I'm just here to also echo and support what folks have been saying in regards to ICE transparency and identification and just a few quick points here. I think calling a special meeting would be a very good idea, just to talk about this as soon as possible. I'm hoping that the city will ensure all enforcement personnel are clearly identified and unmasked, especially when it involves federal agencies like ICE. Unmarked or masked enforcement agents create fear and confusion, especially for undocumented residents, and Alhambra should step, stand up for due process and protect residents from unlawful or deceptive enforcement tactics. So just here to support everyone else who is asking for this and also calling for a special meeting. Thank you.
The last raised hand is Raul Barrera.
Good evening, my name is Raul Barrera. I've been living in the city of Alhambra for pretty much most of my life. And I don't even need to remind you that this, as you just look around and then you see that we are either immigrants or the children of immigrants, and that's something that Alhambra should be proud of. Unfortunately, our community, all of Alhambra, it's been under attack by the federal government under the excuse of detaining people here undocumented. That's just an excuse. Basically, they're going after anyone that looks like any of you, people that looks like me. This shouldn't be the case. This is not the country that we wanted to live in. And I urge the city council, as the other community members I spoke before, to call them for a special meeting to address this issue and do whatever is under your control to prevent this illegal detentions by what I call militias, because that's what they are. We don't know who these people are. To me, they could be just random people who wear higher as guns to come and harass our community. That should be illegal under any law that I'm aware of. And I urge the city of Alhambra to make an official statement, take a stand to ban all these activities by so-called ICE agents and basically do whatever it's within reach to protect our community. We don't feel safe. I can just be walking out in the street and be pulled over by masked people that I don't know who they are. So I urge the city of Alhambra to make it official to not allow this kind of activities in our city. Thank you very much.
There are no more raised hands on Zoom.
Thank you. At this time next, we have council communications. Councilmember Mazza, would you like to start?
Sure, thank you. So I guess the one thing I want to address is the concerns by the community in regards to the ICE activity happening all over the country really, but specifically in Alhambra and all of Los Angeles County, Southern California. You know, I think it's pretty obvious, as many have commented tonight, that, you know, all of us, if not most of us, are immigrants at some point. I mean, how far back, we don't know, but, you know, I myself am an immigrant. I was not born here. You know, was fortunate to become a legal resident and citizen with my family through the Reagan amnesty back in the 80s, but, you know, some have not been as fortunate. You know, we hear comments from people saying, you know, you have to do it legally, you have to do it right, and people have tried. I mean, people have tried for decades and decades and are still under a situation where they haven't had a hearing, they haven't had their day in court, and now even though they have these processes in progress, many are being denied their time in court to become legal. So just unfortunate that we're dealing with this. I think we've got a situation where we need to take people's dignity, people's, you know, we have to have empathy in the way this is being treated and none of that is being taken into consideration. A lot of it is just, you know, it's a numbers game for these ICE agents. You know, let's grab who we see who may fit that profile and let's figure out what sticks or who sticks. You know, in many cases, you know, they'll pick up 10 people and by coincidence, you know, eight of them will be undocumented, you know, whatever the numbers might be, but it's a numbers game for them. And again, the way these people are being treated, there's absolutely no empathy. You know, as far as our police department, we know that there is no cooperation with ICE, but we're in a situation right now where we don't know who these people may be. You know, these people either in Alhambra or surrounding communities. I know we are directly speaking about Alhambra now. I've spoken to our city manager a few times where I think the situations that we've seen, you know, ICE has been in the city of Alhambra, they've communicated with the police department, they've identified themselves, but there are many instances where they have not identified themselves. Mentioning somebody this morning that I personally saw what could have been an ICE agent at the Home Depot in Alhambra over the weekend, actually changing license plates in a car. I mean, that doesn't seem legal. Issues like that have to be addressed. This person, you know, didn't have a mask on, fit the profile of what we've been seeing, these so-called bounty hunters, what they may look like. This person fit that profile. I want to, I want to make sure that the police department is able to legally address this and, you know, while not interfering with the legal duties of ICE, maybe ICE coming in with a legal warrant to identify themselves, you know, we can't interfere with that, but when they're coming in unidentified, unmarked cars, you know, in situations like, like I mentioned, changing plates, that has to be addressed. So I am definitely supportive of a special meeting to address those concerns and figure out how we might be able to better move forward as a community in, in the police department, with the police department, addressing these issues. But, you know, I understand that the law has to be upheld by immigration officers, but it's got to be done with respect, it's got to be done with dignity. The Alhambra Police Department can't, you know, walk around the city of Alhambra masked and not identify themselves when picking somebody up. Why should any other agency be able to do that within the city of Alhambra? Other than that, yeah, I mean, you know, the small businesses, not only in Alhambra, but all of LA County have been impacted. I think all of us or most of us know somebody who knows somebody who is affected directly or indirectly by the situation. And, you know, just wanted to say, Mr. McCammon, you know, the quote that you shared with us earlier is something that we all have to keep in mind. You know, at some point, like I said, you know, we were all foreigners in this land. Somehow, some way, at some point, how far back, it all changes, but, you know, for many people, it's a matter of technicalities that they're not legal. You have, I'm not going to mention the country, but you have people in Florida who basically, as soon as they step on US soil, they have the right to, or a path to legal residency and citizenship in the US. You know, how does that change for somebody coming in from other countries into other parts of the US? It's all a matter of technicality in my, in my opinion, but again, the way that this is being treated or conducted has to change. We have to stand up for our communities and I am completely open to and supportive of having a special meeting to discuss this and coming up with a, you know, path with our police department to address this and address it right and do this as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Mazza, for your very thoughtful and genuine comments regarding the immigration enforcement that we're seeing in our communities across, across LA County and across the nation, for that matter. I had a prepared statement and basically I just wanted to say that, you know, that the raids in and around our immigrant communities. the raids in and around our immigrant communities have fueled so many fears, and we do understand the anxiety that it creates. And I want folks to know, even though you may not think it's enough, it is, it is of value that we recently reaffirmed our support for Senate Bill 54 in the California Values Act, because it stops state and local resources from being used for mass deportations. And I understand that it ensures important institutions such as schools, health facilities, courthouses must remain accessible to everyone. We want to inform our residents, so I too would be interested in having some sort of a special meeting regarding our families who have been traumatized or have had loved ones in deportation proceedings. We have many resources out there that we may be able to share. I know for me, I've noticed that Home Depot is empty, and the workers are frightening to search for work. They always are so helpful to me as I'm gathering my plants and things and getting to the car, and they've always been so gracious and grateful and such honest people who, who just look for work. Today, I joined Senator Perez, who introduced the Vigilantes Act that will expand an existing law about impersonation of law enforcement. It will require law enforcement to visibly, visibly display their name. As aptly said by Councilman Maza, that has never been a problem with our police department. But it will also allow a request that there's a reasonable suspicion of an impersonator and will allow officers to ask for, for permission to ask to, who they are, if they're not disclosing who they are. It'll also prohibit the use of bounty hunters for immigration-related raids. The face coverage is what's made it so difficult for public to distinguish real officers from non-officers. I would just like to, I agree that we should do some special meeting as soon as we can. I also understand that with, when I was with Senator Perez today, I did impart to her that it needed to be an urgency bill and not just go through the same method that all the bills are going through right now, which is in committee and they haven't hit the floor yet, or some have hit the floor. But an urgency bill, just like an urgency policy we had for a moratorium on rental, you know, rental increases, and just like we did when we had moratorium for the pandemic and allowed us to go online to do our work, and we continue to do our work as, as, you know. So I too would agree with having a special meeting, and perhaps we'll have more information about that urgency bill that would help the, not just the city of Alhambra, but the state of California. I also want to mention a couple of things, and I'm hoping that I can have council's support on this, is in keeping with the goal to provide a healthy Alhambra, for example, banning flavored tobacco sales in Alhambra. And yes, we did have pushback from some of our businesses, but we were very careful to allow them to sell what they had on the site. But the work that, the banning was so critical for our students because they were targeting kids to pick up smoking and to pick up flavored e-cigarettes. So I hope that the council will agree with me and bring back a discussion on potentially creating a smoke-free in multi-housing units. That means people who are connected to other people just by opening your front door. Very close. One in three are exposed to that air, and so I'm hoping that I can get you to agree that we need to bring this back. And I understand that Pasadena was made, mentioned that Pasadena and about 22 other cities have, have a current ordinance in place. I would also like during, you know, I know we talked about 4th of July, and I'm hoping that our police department will ride by and check on Lola Armandades in her area there, especially the Edison easement that is utilized for fireworks. I know you guys are driving around anywhere, anyway, looking for those, those fireworks that are, really cause the problem, right? I also wanted to address, okay, I think that I might be done, or just say like a few. I think, I think that's it. I think, yeah.
I want to thank everyone who came out and spoke about these issues related to ICE enforcement. Obviously, it's, it's really painful. Councilman Maza is right, we're all, you know, at some point in our history, we're all from somewhere else. And, you know, I was born here, but my wife was not, you know. Her mother came over with, with a single mom with two young girls and made her way. And, you know, it was a time, different time when there's a little bit more reason and compassion going into people trying to come to this country and make a better life for themselves, whereas we have now, I think it's sort of indiscriminate, arbitrary enforcement across the board with no rhyme or reason, and questionable due process, if any. So it's, it's very concerning. I would support a special meeting to talk about these issues. What I, what I'd like to see out of this would be, you know, a statement that would be similar to what some of the other cities in our area have done. I do think whatever action we take needs to be focused on our residents and the well-being of our residents. I don't want to put our police officers in a confrontational stance with federal agents. It's, that's, that doesn't seem like a fairly responsible thing to do for a small city like Alhambra. However, I would welcome things like Senator Perez's Vigilante Act. I mean, I haven't read it through completely. I know there was just an announcement today, but to the extent it can help with transparency and clarity and making sure people understand who they're dealing with when they are confronted by law enforcement, I think it would be helpful to everyone. And to the extent that our police officers are involved in that, I'd really like to hear from the chief and try to figure out how we do this in a responsible way that doesn't put our officers in any danger. I think we, we need to focus on also identifying resources that are existing. There are existing resources for residents who are, who may be afraid or currently facing potential immigration enforcement, what their rights are as an informative aspect of this. So I would welcome it. I think there's a lot to discuss here, and I'd really like to explore what, what a city like Alhambra can do. It is, it's, it has not been fun to see this, and I feel very helpless about it, and perhaps something good can come out of this if we have this discussion and we figure out some way forward for us. I've been reading some, some of what neighboring cities have done, and it's a little bit all over the board, so I, I'd like us to be thoughtful about it when we have this discussion, if we have this discussion. Councilmember Andrade, I would support your, your move for the multifamily housing smoking discussion. Is there something else? Something else? No. But I think that there's, there's some important work to be done, and we don't have another regular meeting for a month or so, so we can slot some time in there for this, this particularly important discussion, especially for a community like Alhambra that is, you know, heavily immigrant and heavily comprised of ethnic minorities who may have families that have recently immigrated, like, like my own, my wife's. So I look forward to that discussion and trying to figure out a way forward that makes sense for us and really focuses on our residents.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I also share the sentiment shared by Councilmember Maza, and I think that immigrants are the backbone of our country, and we, we're all immigrants to tracing back some, at some point, right? And it's been painful to watch what's been going on just in LA County around us, and I, I believe everybody should be treated with respect and dignity, and what's been happening is just very, very concerning. So I do understand all the concerns and anger and frustration and confusion that our community has been experiencing. And I just want to take a moment to also reassure everybody. We've had conversations with staff and city managers about this, given what's been happening in the city, that our local law enforcement, our police department do not enforce federal immigration laws, and we do not assist in any way. In fact, our local enforcement and the federal agencies operate very independently. So we do not notify federal agencies, and they do not notify us with what they're doing. I just want to put it out there that our police department's priority is to keep our community safe, and your safety and trust matter to us, and matters to us even more in this difficult time. So if you ever feel unsafe or need a system, please do not hesitate to reach out. Call us, our local law enforcement is here to support you and protect everyone in our community. Now, with that said, I hear the concerns, and I hear my colleagues' comments. I would also support having another meeting to agendize this and think about what we can do. I would agree with Vice Mayor Maloney that I also would not support putting our officers in any confrontational stance with the federal agencies. I recognize that it's just a very difficult time to go out there to work, even as law enforcement today, and given what's been happening on the streets. And also recognizing that our law enforcement has a primary duty, which is to keep the citizens of Alhambra safe. And they have their duties, they have their obligations, so I want to make sure that we're mindful about that, and we're trying, we're figuring out a way to do this with the recognition that, that they already have a job and they are here to keep our community safe. So I can support agendizing a meeting and further discuss this.
Thank you, council members, for your comments, and I've been very, very cautiously watching what's on the media and social media. There's so much information out there during the past three, four weeks, and it's incredible how things just take place so quickly. And my sympathy really goes out to the families who are separated because of the enforcement of the immigration law. I was an immigrant. The immigration process itself, applying to be immigrants itself is also very tedious, I remember. My dad and the rest of the family were separated for about a couple of years. He had to go ahead to come to America first, based on the process of applying for legal immigration. So our family was separated. So the rest of them were staying in Taiwan, and then my mom came to the United States, joined my dad for a while because of the process. So I was left with my great aunt and my sister, and I was only third grade or fourth grade. So I certainly could understand, but finally reunited, and we gained the legal status as immigrant, as residents, and finally became citizens. I remember the special day when we were all sworn in, I believe, was LA Convention Center. So people who came here as immigrants through the legal process certainly understand that the process could be very tedious. But my heart goes out to the ones who, the families were separated because the enforcement of the immigration law. But I too, as a council member, as an elected official, have to uphold the law. We all took an oath to protect and uphold the Constitution of the United States, as well as the California, state of California. So I would not put our police in any confrontation with any federal agents because of that. But I certainly want to make sure that the residents are, feel safe, the residents have their questions answered about, specifically about these masked men that are being, appearing on TV. I too had questions about who they are, why are they masked? Certainly, I don't believe they're ICE agents because they're, why are they hiding their, their faces? So I, I do support to have a special meeting to address this specifically about sightings in Alhambra, and also is there a possible, a way to report these sightings and actually, you know, make sure that these men are not doing any harm to our residents? So I do support this special meeting, you know, as soon as possible. We could schedule that. And, but I think it's really important that, for me, right now and always, one of my top priorities is always peace within the city and respect for each other. I know that there have been things said on both sides, even during city council meetings, that people have free speech. So it's really up to each individual to make sure that we do not, we, we listen, even though we disagree, but we still make sure that we understand that each of us has free speech, based on our constitution. And following with that, I just want to kind of really highlight this, the special event that we had, where Congresswoman Judy Chi was also present last week. We had another ribbon cutting for Lantern Terrace, our first affordable housing in downtown Alhambra. And right now, this development has residents all moved in, and many of them, they're low income people, some are families, some are individuals. And specifically, I was informed, I was really happy to hear that there's some young adults who are in there as residents, who were foster children who got out the system but still had no support. So we are providing housing for them. So I'm really happy that we're, we're taking care of these young people. And also, one of the residents spoke during the ribbon cutting event. I was very touched. He was homeless for about two years, and he was very, very happy that he has a place to live in Alhambra. And I want to make sure that our residents are welcoming them. They're going to be on the street shopping, just like anybody else, as they go about their way. He basically shared with us that he just didn't have the support he needed, so he ended up that way on the street. No fault on his own, he's, he's not a criminal. So I want to make sure our residents understand that we have these new residents with us right now, they're living Lantern Terrace, and the city, and I know the city manager has been working very hard in helping me with answering some questions, and I think everything's going very smoothly. Any, any issues with the development are, are being taken care of. And also, one thing I was really happy that I didn't realize is actually pet-friendly. And that's really important to me, because I, I remember reading articles about homeless people refuse going to shelters because they have to leave their dogs and pets, and they refuse to go in the shelter. And I certainly understand that. As a pet owner, I, I, it would be very, very heart-wrenching to leave your dog or cats out and because, and they're not allowing you to shelter. So I really applaud the council members who approved this, this development. Long time ago, we were seeing fruition and helping real people in front of us. So I'm really glad that we made that big step. And just want to kind of pitch in for them. I talked to the manager there, they do need donations. They, they moved in, and I, you know, people who have never been homeless do not realize that, they don't know how to organize their belongings, because being on the street, they just are living out of bags and shopping carts and what have you. So they're training them, they're, they're providing education, both are training them for life skills. So the manager said that if anyone wants to donate, they will need some organizers, like shoe organizers or organize for the bathroom, or the closet hangers, or something like that, and feel free to drop them off. I don't remember the actual address, but you could look online, and I, I'm going to donate something for them as well. So, so that's something I want to mention, have a special mention for, for Lantern Terrace. And also, since there's been a few speakers speaking about fireworks, and I really, I want to just kind of pitch into the police department that I heard, somebody told me, I didn't verify, so a few cities have already using drones to detect illegal fireworks. I'm not, I could kind of imagine the aerial view and all that, tracking illegal fireworks, which is the main concern for us right now. So just want to, you know, have the chief consider that, you know, you have the drones already. already, you know, tracking crimes or what have you, but illegal fireworks certainly will be something that I would like you to consider. I think that's all I have, want to say for tonight. And let's see what else. Okay, that's it. We have now completed all the items. Anything else we want to add?
Madam Mayor, just clarification for, for staff's purposes. I know that two of the councilmembers mentioned that they were interested in considering a ban on smoking in multifamily housing. I didn't hear the other three councilmembers respond to that. So is, is that something that the entire council would like to see agendized or not?
I'd like to support that as well.
It's just supporting agendizing.
Agendizing a discussion.
Discussion, sure.
Okay.
And also, what about the special meeting? I think all of us support that, so that'll be.
Yes, I, I assume that the city manager will be in contact with regard to your availability for your calendars and then staff will have to internally discuss what we need to do to get information, gather information to make that meeting hopefully a little more productive. And, and that will have to factor into the timeline.
Just so the council knows, I just heard from Senator Perez and she's, no, it will be an urgency bill. So we'll get at least information from that and how quickly it's moving.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. We have now completed all the items on this evening's agenda. Our next regular meeting will be on Monday, July 28th. This meeting is now adjourned.